The, the appellate will have the first opportunity to reply, and then the appellate will have an opportunity to reply. And we'll play it by ear there as to how much time is needed on those. And then we'll have questions by the commissioners, or any, any cross-examination also will be an op, uh, a possibility at the end of each presentation. So with that, uh, uh, the, the, the everyone speaking does need to be sworn in, so be prepared for that. And is there anything that I have missed, commissioners or Mr. Audio? If not, we can proceed then with the first presentation, which is the appellate.
Do I need to be sworn in?
Do you swear in a firm under oath and penalty of law that the testimony you are about to give is true and factual?
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Sherri Popham. Thank you. Good morning, commissioners, Mr. Chair, council, and staff, and members of the audience for being here this morning. My name is Sherri Popham. I'm vice president of the Stagecoach Hills Neighborhood Association, and I'm able assisted by my fellow board member and friend Terry Thompson this morning with the slide production. The first slide today shows our order of presentation, and I will make an effort to, can we back up on that a bit, Terry? I will make an effort to show my case this morning is clearly and concisely, it will probably be just a smidge over 20 minutes. This is an appeal by the Stagecoach Hills Neighborhood Association to the Taos County Planning Board of Commissioners of the August 22 Planning Director Determination that the installation of an asphalt plant did not need to obtain a special use permit. Technically, we're here today to appeal the Board of Adjustments' vote to uphold that decision. Two separate justifications were provided for that decision. The first justification was in the determination letter, which stated that the asphalt plant, as a standalone entity, qualified for grandfathering as defined in the county land use regulations. The revised and second justification was set forth in the staff report to the Board of Adjustments following our submittal of a clear argument refuting the reasoning in the initial letter of determination. This new argument was an A, SUP was not required since the asphalt plant would be located on property that had been grandfathered in for special use and a different purpose, that being gravel extraction. Neither of these arguments are supported by the Taos County Land Use Regulations. Taos Article, Taos County Article 9 states that our appeal today should describe how the appellate is affected by the decision and the specific factual and legal errors allegedly made by the planning director. So why are we appealing this decision? It matters to us, and Stagecoach Neighborhood Association has standing. The asphalt plant poses health and environmental risks to humans and animals. The grandfathering of this plant is a violation of Taos County's own land use regulations. Let me begin by explaining why SNA, Stagecoach Hills Neighborhood Association, and many others here today are affected by this decision and therefore have standing in the matter. There are two primary reasons. The first is location. It's totally unacceptable. The second is environmentally. It represents an unacceptable health risk to animals and humans.
Hold it just a minute. Uh, yeah, she does have 15, 20 minutes to present, but go ahead.
We need to limit the, this, the consideration of this hearing to what it's supposed to be.
We need to limit the scope of this hearing to what it's supposed to be, what I'm referring to specifically. The environmental, as I read up here, the, that this, that this project is environmentally unsafe, that's just not true. And not only is it, but, 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 excuse me, bear with me. Not only is that not true, but this board commission does not have this, this commission is not-
Mr. Romero, please, I understand that, but for the 15, first 15, 20 minutes, we'll let her make the presentation, and then you will have 15, 20 minutes to, to respond.
Bear with me, Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Vice Chairman. The point is, is that this commission does not have jurisdiction to hear this issue. It's already been resolved. New Mexico Environment Department has, has made its determination regarding the environmental emissions safety.
Okay, let her finish her, her presentation, and then you'll get your opportunity.
I'd like to back up to the slide where the Article 9 Appeal Section C says, "The appeal shall describe how the appellate party is affected by the decision", and that's where I am right now. It then says that I should address the specific factual errors and legal errors allegedly made by the planning director, and that's what I intend to do today. The state permit for this facility, onto Slide 8, is no, uh, for this facility notably requiring compliance with all county LURs as a condition for approval, allows operation 12 hours a day, seven days a week, 52 weeks per year in perpetuity. In other words, every single day, there'll be relentless emission of noxious odors affecting everything in the vicinity. The following are maps showing adjacencies to the asphalt plant to the areas of operation. Can we go back to the maps, Terry? You seem to be a little out of order. Okay, there we go. The Rio Grande del Norte National Monument is 1/4 mile from the area of operations. Rio Grande Gorge and Nation, and Bridge National Heritage Site, 1.65 from the area of operation. Slide 12, the Greater World Community, at half a mile from the area of operations. Stagecoach Hills, 3/4 miles from the area of operation. This is a consolidated slide showing the exact location of the operation. The county's decision directly relates to a recent study by NIH, which reveals that housing prices within close proximity of a toxic plant decreased by about 11% after the plant opens. Housing prices are largely affected by plant, largely unaffected by plant closing, implying that the toxic plants continue negatively affecting prices after they cease operation. The county's departure from clients with its own, uh, compliance with its own LURs has denied the public a proper hearing and a decision that has placed the affected property owner's values and health at risk. Depending on the wind direction, it will affect the earthship community, Stagecoach Hills, Hondo Mason, and other scattered neighborhoods. In addition, the smell and toxic fumes will undoubtedly reach the Rio Grande Gorge Bridge and the throngs of visitors that enjoy Taos County's number one attraction every day. Continuing with concerns about the location, the plant is bounded on three sides by the Rio Grande del Norte National Monument, an area designated by Presidential Proclamation owing to the area's, quote, "stunning geology and an extraordinary array of scientific and historic resources." Most importantly, the president enumerated reasons for establishing the monument, including protecting this habitat for the endangered southwestern willow flycatcher. This federal mandate protects the species under the Endangered Species Act. Hazardous materials authorized from hazardous materials authorized by the state permit, which is at least 23 tons per year. As you know, the ESA prohibits any action that causes a taking of any listed species of endangered fish or wildlife. In addition, this area represents one of the largest wildlife and bird migration corridors in our area, is used for multiple species, including our beloved big horn sheep. In a county of 2,200 square miles, it is inconceivable that a source of toxic pollution and fumes would be permitted in this special area. I'll now talk about the environmental concerns. Environmentally, the asphalt plant represents an unacceptable health risk to humans and animals, both wild and domestic. One of the environmental concerns we have is the emissions. The state granted by the permit, granted by the New Mexico Environmental Department, or the NMED, is for a permanent facility. A condition of approval is that the applicant must comply with all county zoning and land use regulations. The NMED transcript of the contentious hearing regarding the approval of this permit reveals that several members of the board expressed that the additional oversight needed, uh, was needed due to documentation of mitigation non-compliance in the operation of the gravel operation where the proposed asphalt plant was to be located. The board expressed its regret it did not have the resources to routinely monitor compliance by the applicant and asked the public to assist with reporting evidence of non-compliance. The state permit requires that visible emissions from various sources in the facility are limited to less than five minutes per two-hour period, and that no visible emissions from the facility shall cross the perimeter of the restricted area. With the consistently strong winds on the mace often reaching 50 miles an hour, it's impossible for the asphalt plant to comply with these requirements. Given the very dry, very windy conditions, the amount of water needed to control the dust will be considerable. The conditions of the NMED permit cannot be met because there's no apparent access to water at the site, and historically at least, no visible evidence of water trucks. This slide is from the New Mexico State Engineers Office showing the nearest wells and the distance operation. Nearby residents can often see dust clouds from the gravel pit operation during the dry season and have documented the same. Failure to mitigate the addition of noxious and hazardous materials that will be aerosolized by the asphalt plant magnifies our concern exponentially. A second concern is the impact on water. As you know, the only store of supportable water for many homes in this area is catchment from roofs. The modeling relied on the state does not account for the atypical situation provided by the, presented by the earthships and other off-grid housing in the area. Studies have shown that water samples taken from examined water wells and streams near asphalt plants contain high levels of the carcinogen formaldehyde, which is highly soluble in water, and this proposed plant is adjacent to our sacred Rio Grande River. Still another concern is the health impacts of the plants. Using a nationwide network of monitoring sites, EPA monitors ambient air quality trends for particle pollution, also referred to as PM2 particulate matter, described as fine inhalable party, uh, particles with diameters generally 2.5 micrometers or less. Under the Clean Air Act, EPA sets and reviews national standards for particle matter. Air quality monitors measure concentrations throughout the county. EPA, state, and tribal governments, and local agents are supposed to use this to ensure that particle matter in the air is at levels that protect public health. I did look at one of this, uh, this is a little difficult slide to see, but I looked at one of these monitoring stations, and right above the little box identifies, this is a Santiago Fire Station, uh, monitoring station. You'll see on that one day that I looked, everyone in northern New Mexico is green, except we are red, which is a, a notation of a danger zone. So we already, on some days, have an issue with particle matter in our community. With the asphalt plant at the old blinking light, which has 128, approximately 128 tons, as compared to 23 with this one, and many other gravel pits permitted by NMED in Taos County, more that operate without the benefit of permit, we also already have a lot of PM2s in the air. At the international level, there are many research studies that have investigated the health and environmental impacts associated with the asphalt plant adjacent to residential communities. They found the main and widespread health problems are respiratory illnesses, cancer, heart disease, and others. The Journal of Environmental Health Edition revealed that distances studied up to two to three miles showed negative health effects. Due to staffing limitations, monitoring by NMED of these plants is non-existent. Compliance is, reporting is performed by the permities. And Taos County at the time does not have the local capacity to monitor and analyze the air pollution emissions in this area in order to protect our health and the wildlife and occupants nearby. There does not seem to be any air pollution monitoring oversight by the county that I could locate at this time. I believe I've demonstrated the negative impacts this asphalt plant will have and how it affects us with its effect on water and the health of nearby residents. Now I'll move on to explain why the county's decision to allow this plant to operate without a special use permit was made in error. I mentioned this at the beginning of my presentation that as an appellate, we are in essence appealing two separate and totally different rationales for decision, either of which allows the asphalt plant to come to fruition while sidestepping the SUP. First, the letter of determination was issued in that the planning director deals individually with the gravel pit and the asphalt plant, giving specific arguments for each and why they qualified for grandfathering, therefore, thereby avoiding the SUP process. The second and totally different rationale was developed after we presented our case before the BOA, which totally refuted the letter of determination that the asphalt plant met the Taos County requirements for grandfathering. Our argument was largely based on documentation submitted by the applicant and his attorney. It presented definitive reasoning as to why the asphalt plant did not meet the county requirements for grandfathering of continuous and principal use. It was not till the issuance of the staff report prepared for the BOA that we learned that the county's argument had changed after our submittal. Now they claim that gravel pits and asphalt plants are one and the same and governed by the same criteria. Based on this new argument, the BOA upheld the planning director's decision, although we successfully refuted the new argument and pointed out additional LURs that would prevent grandfathering. It is key to note that one member in that committee, our board, had to abstain because of a conflict of interest. He then spoke profusely on behalf of the applicant. Only two other members could attend, so a substitute was assigned. In the decision, one abstained, the chairman leaving the vote to two members. The attorney present could not answer any questions as they were, quote, "unprepared," yet a vote was taken. Since the BOA could not make a decision within the confines of the Taos County definition of permanent and primary use, they based it on a definition in an unrelated court case in Rio Arriba having to do with incidental use. Let me explain why the county's most recent assertion that the asphalt plant falls under non-conforming use is unsound. Section 4.13.3, Temporary Asphalt Plants and Concrete Plants states, "A special major development permit shall be required for all temporary asphalt plants and concrete plants." The planning director's revised rationale for grandfathering asserts that the gravel pit is grandfathered and that the asphalt plant is, quote, "an associated use." This is not borne out in the state regulations as asphalt plants and gravel pits require separate permits and are treated separately. The county land use regulations are the same and are clear in this distinction. A special use permit is required for all asphalt plants. There are no exceptions in the law for plants located near or in gravel pits. There's no mention of incidental gravel production being included as part of gravel extraction in any of the LURs. Suppose asphalt production is considered part of gravel mining? Does that mean that refining oil is the same for drilling, therefore requiring no separate permit for a refinery located at the site of an oil well? If a smelter is considered part of mineral extraction, therefore no need for a separate permit? Clearly, these industrial processes are separate from obtaining, simply obtaining raw materials, and the same holds true here. The Taos County Planning Director treated them separately and made separate determinations in 2022. The NMED requires separate air quality permits for gravel extraction and asphalt plants, this case in point. Another requirement is that the operation will not have increased in size, will not have increased in size. So let's take a look at that regulation. Point, uh, Section 3.3.2, "Any expansion of a legal non-conforming use that would increase its size or footprint in excess of an aggregate of 25% or any such increase in its livable or usable space shall require a special use permit or major development zoning permit as otherwise required by this ordinance." But in fact, this operation has increased by more than 25%. This slide shows the 2019 versus 2022 areas of operation as mapped by the applicant to the state. You can see that by every measure, this operation is significantly larger than at any, only other time it was briefly used at this location in the last 10 years. I want to address a very unique assertion that was discussed at the BOA meeting. At that hearing, Mr. Romero argued that because one piece of equipment of many is the same size as it was 13 years ago, it means the asphalt operation itself is the same size. This is obviously wrong. There is much more to an operation than a single piece of equipment. In 2019, there were 10 components, there are now 19, and the footprint of the asphalt plant operation has more than doubled. The TCPCD letter of determination states that the, quote, "The asphalt plant does not increase the aggregate size of the overall operation of business, therefore is not considered an expansion to the legal non-conforming use." This is inaccurate. As shown on the maps provided by the applicant, the approximate perimeters of the asphalt plant area of operations have doubled. Regardless of whether the county argument is that the asphalt plant, as a standalone entity, qualifies for grandfathering, or if they argue that the asphalt plant and gravel pit are the same, this one issue should generate the requirement for the applicant to submit an SUP. The regulation I just discussed is not the only place in the ordinances that spell out clear rules for this situation. Section 4.142, "A special use major development permit is required for any new or existing mining operation that desires to add processing equipment on-site." This well-written and clear statement applies directly to the current situation. What we have here is an existing mining operation, a gravel pit, that desires to add a processing equipment to asphalt plant. The law requires an SUP. As an aside, there's no language relating to asphalt plants in the LURs other than temporary asphalt plants. No permanent facilities are ever mentioned. Likewise, there's no language that distinguishes asphalt plants that are associated, incidental, or close to the gravel pit. If the regulation intended to make exceptions, there would have clearly been stated, but of course, otherwise, all means all. I've demonstrated why all asphalt plants should be permitted as asphalt plants cannot be allowed to skirt the permitting process just because they're associated with a gravel pit. I'll now go on to address the county's initial decision to, that the asphalt plant should be grandfathered as an asphalt plant, and that it meets the requirements of continuous operation at this location prior to the 2014 LURs. First, let's look at the applicable section of the LUR. Section 3.3.2, "A land use which was lawful before Taos County land use regulations were passed or under an existing land use regulation but would be prohibited, regulated, or restricted under the terms of the new regulation and subsequent amendments" is permitted. The land use must have remained a continuous use for that purpose as its principal use. The Taos County Planning determins, and this determination was based on claims that the plant should be grandfathered because it meets these criteria. First and foremost, there's no evidence that the plant was used, land was used continuously for an asphalt plant as its principal use at this location before 2014, which would be essential for the non-conforming use to be grandfathered. The evidence presented by the applicant makes a strong case for the principal use of the property being the gravel pit, which in most cases was prohibited by state regs from operating when the asphalt plant was in place. The gravel pit has not continuously included asphalt production, and in fact, gravel production in no way requires asphalt production to operate. Mr. Perovich's affidavit of 5922 states that transporting a portable asphalt plant to the Torres Pit occurred, quote, "at various times over the year." So while it's possible, though not proven, that there was asphalt production at the location of Torres, for 2014, it was not continuous, and asphalt production was not the principal use of the land. There is conclusive evidence in the asphalt plant's applicant's own documentation that the land was not continuously or principally used. So the applicant was not used, uh, asphalt plant was not used continuously at this location, anything but. This slide clearly demonstrates the lack of continuous use. And I won't elaborate here in the essence of time, but you can see that there are only, on this 10-year period, or 13-year period, there are two times where there's evidence that the asphalt plant actually had temporary permission to be on-site.
Ms. Pod, may I have one minute?
Okay, I'm closing right now. If you could give me just a couple, I was interrupted during the beginning of the presentation. In closing, I have shown that the proposed asphalt plant does not meet the requirements for grandfathering because, as per the LURs, all asphalt plants are required to have an SUP. The footprint has and will increase by more than 25%. Processing and operations are being added. There's no historical continued use or principal operation. NMED did approve this, but with conditions, and reiterated that it must meet all Taos County requirements. In fact, the narrow scope of their legal, what they could legally consider for the permit, they offered the permission that the county had much more latitude to take action, that would consider our concerns and protect our communities. Important to note that the state air quality division does not review how to mitigate other hazards, such as water pollution, traffic pollution, and noise from operating and transporting machinery. Just to keep in mind that the permit from the state does not prevent pollution. It only determines how much pollution can be legally allowed. The facts presented today provide conclusive evidence that the asphalt plant must not be allowed to operate at the location in the question as a non-conforming use without first going through an SUP, including the opportunity for public input. We respect the county and the staff and the work they do on behalf of the citizens. We have a long history of working with them on land use. The final slide that I'd like to offer has to do with precedence. While not based on a specific land use regulation, planning, like any discipline, must be concerned about the unintended consequences of well-intended actions. Thus, it is important to realize that by allowing the decision to stand, the county will set a precedent for any gravel pit in the county that meets the criteria in which the county based this decision, specifically grandfathering, to establish an asphalt plant without a need for an SUP. So your decision today has long-term consequences. I'm showing this slide again just to show most of these plants could be grandfathered. Potentially, they could all be asphalt plants. In closing, we'd like to ask the Board of Commissioners summarily to deny the applicant in their efforts to locate a plant adjacent to three neighborhoods, two federally mandated protected areas, and the number one tourist destination in Taos County. But understanding the parameters and limitations of your power for action today, we respectfully ask that the Board of Commissioners to reverse this decision, require the applicant to submit a special use permit for the operation of the asphalt plant. I thank you for your time and look forward to answering any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pod. Mr. Romero, would you like an opportunity to cross-examine before your presentation? Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. Let me try to reframe the issues before you today. This is a hearing to consider a determination of a vested right. Grandfathering in. Let me tell you what it's not. This is not a special use permit hearing.
What is your question?
He needs to be sworn in.
Okay, he should have been sworn in. Go ahead.
Do you affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true and factual?
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Dennis Romero. I'm the attorney representing the Appellate Perovich Properties, Inc., and Taos Gravel, excuse me. As I was saying, the scope of this hearing is to consider a determination of a vested right. Grandfathering in. Whether or not that was an appropriate decision or not. The interim planning director took all of the information and evidence that we, that we, that we offered, and made that determination that in fact, this operation, the asphalt plant relocation is appropriate relative to existing Taos County regulations, and based upon principally the portions of the code that recognize a vested right, grandfathering in. The reason we say this are pretty straightforward. One is that the site is the Torres Gravel Pit. That has been in operation as a gravel pit since the 1970s. Mr. Rafael Torres, representing the family ownership and interests on that property, is present and will testify to that, to the continuity of the use as a gravel pit at the Torres Pit. That is the scope of this hearing. Relative to the asphalt plant, the asphalt plant also has, meets the grandfathering in aspect of the Taos County land use codes. Why do I say this? Because that's also very clear. 2009, first, Perovich Properties has been operating asphalt since 1991. Prior to that, the prior owner of Taos Gravel was operating its asphalt plants since 1984. This is not all in the same site. Perovich Properties owns, Taos Gravel owns three different plants. These are portable plants. They're not permanent. They're portable. And the whole concept of this application is that this is a relocation of a portable asphalt plant, in this particular instance, moving from someplace near Eagle Nest in Colfax County to this site. It's not the first time that it has been there. There are, there are prior relocations. The first, well, the first placement of this plant was 2009. The first permit granted by New Mexico Environment Department was 2006 for this particular asphalt plant. 2006 is the, the permanent overlay of a permit is permitted by NMED as granting. 2009 asphalt plant is established at the Grav, at the Torres Pit. It operates 2009 and into 2010. It's then relocated, a new application for the same site to 2019. It operates and moves on. New application, current application, 2022. New Mexico Environment Department, we went through a full consideration of this relocation, and if I may, I would like to offer a copy of the 20, let's see, the December 23, 2022 final order of the New Mexico Environment Department that establishes the compliance with all state and federal regulatory standards relative to emissions, if, if I may. Ms. Romero, there's another. And I want to bring this up now, just so that we can take away from this consideration the toxicity, the dangers. take away from this consideration the toxicity, the dangers. That's just not a valid consideration before this board. And the reason why I say that is because this is a New Mexico Environment Department issue, which has exclusive jurisdiction over the emission standards. What I have presented to you is a copy of that determiner, final order determination of NMED. And I don't want to read through it all. I just want to highlight, if you have those copies before you, highlight a couple of points. Beginning at page 2, findings of fact, paragraph 2. It says, "The application submitted by Permittee," that would be Taos Gravel, "was for a relocation of the hot plant, a previously registered portable source." By the way, before I go on with those portions of it, I want you to take a look at the list of the appellants here. We've got Ms. Popham, who just now presented, Mr. Harameo, and Mr. Fuel. Kim DeRosiers, Loyola Torres, and Jean Wheeler were all parties to this New Mexico Environment Department series of hearings. Moving on, now returning to that page 2. Paragraph 3 says that the, that there was a permit registration issued on September 1, 2020 to construct and operate a hot mix asphalt plant. Paragraph 5, "The Bureau staff completed a thorough administrative and technical review of the relocation application." Moving on to paragraph 3, I'm sorry, page 3, paragraph 7. "The relocation application, as approved, ensures compliance with all federal and state regulations and will not cause or contribute to any exceedances of applicable air quality standards." Moving on to page 4, and I'm, again, just being selective to try to just make my point here that this, that this plant will meet all emission standards. Paragraph 14 on page 4 states, paragraph 15, actually, "The public was also given a reasonable opportunity to submit data, views, or arguments." Moving on to page 5, at the bottom, says in paragraph 22, "The petitioners," they'll include the presenter today, "either separately or together, did not file a statement of intent to submit technical testimony, nor did they offer any admissible technical testimony at the public hearing concerning whether Permittee's relocated source would result in any alleged exceedances. Further, petitioners did not present any admissible evidence rebutting the department's testimony on this point. Petitioners therefore failed to meet their burden of proof." Moving on to page 6. Paragraph 24 states, "The Bureau's technical staff offered extensive testimony at the public hearing describing the Bureau's administrative and technical review of the Permittee's relocation application. Ms. Burns, manager of the Technical Services Unit, testified that Permittee's hot mix asphalt plant was already authorized under General Construction Permit 3 and that the application represented relocation of the facility and substitution of the equipment." Paragraph 25 holds that the approval was appropriate and consistent with the air quality Bureau's process and the applicable regulations. Paragraph 26 found that the petitioners did not offer any technical witness at the public hearing qualified to testify regarding any claimed deficiencies in the Permittee's relocation application. Conclusions of law, a couple of them are relevant here. Page 7, paragraph 29. "Petitioners did not present any admissible evidence, technical or otherwise, at the public hearing concerning any claimed deficiencies in Permittee's relocation application. Further, petitioners did not present any admissible evidence rebutting the department's testimony on this point." Paragraph 31 holds that the petitioners did not present any admissible evidence at the public hearing that the relocation of the facility would cause or contribute to any exceedance of any national or New Mexico ambient air quality standard at the new location. On and on. This is as solid as it can be. So I just want to make this point. This meets all air quality standards, federal and state. As I stated, the gravel production at the Torres Pit has been going on since the 1970s. It's operated, of course, by Mr. Perovich, who holds, who has 82 employees throughout. And he himself, as I stated earlier, produced asphalt generally since 1991. 2009, of course, is the year that the site was first used for asphalt production. 2014 is when the land use code was changed that required the special use permit for asphalt plants specifically. 2009 precedes 2014. That's a simple concept. We're just saying that 2009 is the basis if, where the commencement of the asphalt plant production occurred precedes the creation of the new land use code. That's called grandfathering in. Why is this and how is this tied to the gravel pit? I know that there is an issue that the, that the appellants want to make relative to the incidental use. That the term incidental use as an associated use is not something that we have created here for this hearing. This is actually recognized under New Mexico law. It is cited in the case of Las Cruces versus Huerta. It's a 1984 case. And that, which established the principle. The principle is this, that incidental, excuse me, incidental use is one which is dependent upon or pertains to the principal use and which may be considered an integral part of the primary use. Let me just say that again. Incidental use is one which is dependent upon or pertains to the principal use and which may be considered an integral part of the primary use. It's a 1984 case. It's been followed in New Mexico law in subsequent cases. There's a Bernaleo case in 2004 and 2005. That's the incidental use of the asphalt, of the property for asphalt plant, and is an associated use of gravel. Gravel is, as staff will explain further in its report, gravel is integral to the production of asphalt. It's been there, associated, in the same location for the same related purposes. That's the associated use that is recognized in New Mexico law. Continuity of use. I like the use of the word intermittent, intermittent. I saw that in print in the applicant's presentation. Intermittent use is recognized in New Mexico law as a basis for continuity of use. The decision that I am referring to is, yes, it's a Rio Arriba case. This is New Mexico law. This isn't Taos County law. This isn't Rio Arriba. This isn't Doñana, nothing. This is New Mexico law, which holds that in this situation, in which a gravel, a miner of gravel in Rio Arriba had mined intermittently at the time that there was a new ordinance in place relative to SUPs being required for mining. Well, the question in that case was, did this gravel pit qualify for to be grandfathered in? The opponents said, well, see, they're not using it. The owner stopped using the gravel, using the land for gravel. It's not happening today now that we have implemented the new code, anyway. Court of Appeals said wrong, that the intermittent use of the, establishes the continuity. If it has been used for that purpose, even if it's not on a June, you know, the month of June in, pick your year, 2019, that doesn't mean that this use has stopped. The court went on to say that, let's see, the Court of Appeals states here that rejected the argument that in this mining case, in order to prove continuous activity, the owner must be continuously extracting new materials. No, it held that intermittent use is enough to constitute ongoing, nonconforming activity. And that the real test for determining whether or not a party has stopped using land for that, for that purpose at issue has to do with intent to abandon. And I'm, again, I'm just reciting the law here to you. This, I'm here to inform you what the law is that governs these situations. It's the intent to abandon. That is the test. Has Mr. Perovich, in this, drawing it now to this case, has Mr. Perovich demonstrated any intent to abandon his asphalt plant production that he has operated since 1991? It's pretty easy to say, no. It's actually the antithesis of abandonment that Mr. Perovich can demonstrate. He's got three plants going. He's got another one ready to go. This is, his intent actually is the opposite of abandonment. He will continue in his various locations, depending upon need, demand, market, whatever an asphalt plant producer makes in determining where he will operate and who he can sell to relative to the locations needed, whether it's US Highway 285, whether it's down in Velarde. You know, the various locations that Perovich Property, Properties operate and produce, both their gravel products and their asphalt products.
Mr. Romero, if you could wrap it up in about a minute?
Yes, I can wrap it up very quickly here. Mr. Vice Chair, may I ask?
A couple minutes.
Okay, I'd like to, I think that I can stop now. I think I'd rather have Mr. Torres, Rafael Torres, just give a third, yeah, quickly as he can, opportunity to describe the history of use in that area.
Do you swear and affirm under oath and penalty of law that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual?
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
My name's Rafael Torres. I represent the Torres Trust. I'm successor trustee to my mother, Claudia Torres. The lands in question, my father inherited years ago from his father. Actually, they were adjacent lands. This piece he purchased from his brother, Vermin, back in the 1960s. In the early 70s, my father opened the pit on Section 11. I happened to be with him on the bulldozer when he was opening the first pit there. It was kind of interesting as an eight, nine-year-old, however old I was. But as the years progressed, gravel was extracted there. In the mid, around '76, '77, gravel was extracted for Forestry Road by La Cinta Construction Company. Gravel was later pulled for West Rim Road when it was first gravelled. And then later on in the late 90s, my father contracted with Perovich Properties, Taos Gravel Products, to open a pit on Section 11. That operation has continued since the late 90s So since that, well, the gravel pit has been continuously operating for that entire 20-plus-year period now. So these gravel pits have served the community for commercial and personal uses, and they will continue to do so as long as that pit continues to operate. So on behalf of the Torres property, I support Mr. Perovich on his operation and the permit application process request. As a taxpayer in Taos County, you know, you need to kind of look at the economic impact of this gravel operation. I mean, he's, Mr. Perovich employs a substantial number of individuals, probably a million-plus payroll operation, which adds a lot of economic input to the community. I mean, not, you know, people come in, they, you know, they go grocery shopping, they do restaurants, they do whatever, and that turns the economy again and again, two, three times, creates a lot of jobs. And it all leads to quality of life here in Taos County. You know, we all kind of forget that we'd like having safe roads. Well, asphalt is part of that safe road.
Thank you, Mr. Torres.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, would it be okay to indulge the commission to hear brief, very briefly, from Mr. Perovich?
Would you repeat the question?
Would it be okay if Mr. Perovich just gave a quick statement to you?
That was pretty much a 20 minutes there. And he can, I guess he could speak in the public portion, too.
Fair enough, thank you.
Ms. Pardon, would you like an opportunity to cross-examine?
Yes, sir, I would. Thank you. First, I just want to clarify, we're not objecting to the gravel pit. I would ask Mr. Romero to, he has made an argument for continuous use of the plant. I'm not in agreement with it by any means at all. I think that LURs are extremely clear. But he has not addressed principal use. It says clearly, continuous and principal use. So if he could address that. And also, if he could please address, in this meeting that he's mentioned, that this NMED hearing, we found that there was no permit from, by the county at that time for the gravel pit. So if he could address that. And more importantly, the fact that in that process, we discovered that the crusher plant there that was operating was not permitted by the state. And in the application for the asphalt plant, he said that it was not operating, but it was. So I would ask him to address that. And then finally, in the same meeting, if he could please address the fact that the NMED stated quite clearly that they had very limited ability to approve or not approve an application and that they suggested we go to the county because it was imperative that they met county regulations, not Rio Arriba regulations, county regulations. We don't need to reach out to another county to find the regulations that cover this subject. So I would ask him to address that, please. Particularly the principal use of the operation.
Ms. Romero, three minutes to respond.
It's more than I need. Thank you. Yes, of course, I addressed it. Principal use and associated use, that's the same, that's the same concept. The, and I referred once again to, I'll reread it, as I read it again. Incidental use is one which is dependent upon or pertains to the principal use and which may be considered an integral part of the primary use. The attempt to segregate, to separate these two uses just isn't supposed to work under current and existing New Mexico law. If you have a principal use and an associated use that is related to it, that's, that's what is presented to this commission for consideration. That's it. Next question, I believe, Ms. Pardon, which would you like to have heard?
What was the second question?
To address the fact, he stated that the NMED did have total oversight on this project. And indeed, the NMED stated that the county has requirements that must be met as a condition of the permit. So if he could address that fact that he was indeed operating back to go back to the gravel pit without the benefit of a permit from the county or a permit from NMED.
Yes, I'd be happy to address that as well. That's a mischaracterization of the whole concept. The point is, is that there are a number of conditions that came with the issuance of the permit. Well, there are numerous compliance conditions, basically watering the road, keep the dust down. There are other emissions standards. As we speak today, yes, the permit exists and there are conditions to have to comply with. The final order says zero about, absolutely zero about Taos County requirements. It did refer to the reality that the jurisdiction on emissions is an NMED issue. Compliance with land use regulations is up to the county. Those are separate considerations. We're here on this one, the land use code considerations. Land use, as I said earlier, today, land use code compliance pertains to being grandfathered in. It doesn't change anything. If NMED says, look, take your compliance to your county, well, now here we are. Compliance where their county exists, we have been, we recognize as having a vested right. Therein lies the There, therein lies the inherent compliance.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Romero, at this time, we'd move to, um, comments from, uh, the public, and we'll start with public, uh, with anyone within the, that's present that would like to comment. Uh, Mr. Nick Haramio? Three, three minutes.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, it'll probably take me a couple more minutes and three minutes because I'm, I'm representing, uh, the property that's right adjacent to the gravel pits. So, you know, I'll try to wrap it up in three minutes, but it's very close to it.
Mr. Haramio? Do you swear and affirm under oath and penalty of law that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual?
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Nicholas Haramio. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, uh, Manager Haramio, Counsel, Mr. Perovich. I'm here representing Aaron Fuel, the property owner of section 14, which is just south of section 11. I also have an interest in the property that I run cattle in that area with Mr. Fuel. That is my concern here. We're asking that the application that was approved by the Board of Adjustments be, uh, remanded back to a special use permit for the reasons that I will state. We are requesting an application of, uh, permit, uh, Perovich Properties DBA Task Gravel Products to place and operate an asphalt plant on section 11. Said property belongs to the Torres Living Trust and leased to Perovich. I own the west half of section 14, which is directly to the south of section 11, and where I live with my family and run my ranching business. The Torres Living Trust has an express eastman through a paved road on my property to gain interest to section 11. Mr. Perovich is leasing the property from the Torres Living Trust and has the right to use the paved road only while he has the lease on section 11. The eastman was litigated in district court, and it was ruled that the Torres Living Trust had the right of use to the paved portion only, and that Perovich Property, Task Gravel Properties, had the same right to the paved portion of the road only. The reason I bring this is, it's very critical now as I move forward. Mr. Perovich's property has neglected the court order and continues to drive out of the properties of the paved road, even though he has been, it has been brought to his attention. There is a fence along the highway right away on the west side of the property. We run cattle on my property, and we were forced to fence the east side of the paved road to protect my cattle from being hit going into the highway or by Mr. Perovich's own vehicles. The fence has been hit numerous of times by his trucks, cutting the wires as they travel back and forth. And as a result, there is a section of my property that, well, lied plowed and seeded with monies that we received from Taos Soil Conservation, has been put on hold because of the damaged fences, and we're afraid of our animals moving in and out out of the property because they continue to damage our property. We also marked the west half of the paved road, and someone took down the markings so they could continue to drive outside of the pavement. Mr. Perovich is now applying for a permit to place an asphalt plant on section 11, which by his own admission will greatly increase the number of trucks and equipment coming in and going out on a daily basis. A stated, Mr. Perovich has not followed a direct order of the court to stay within the boundaries of the paved road, and by doing so, he continues to damage my property where his equipment is driving outside of the boundaries of the paved portion. By placing more equipment on the roadway, there is a, there is no doubt there will be continued damage to my fence and property, thus creating a problem for us to continue our ranching business. In an application to state in New Mexico, Mr. Perovich stated that, that approved by the county that he would be running in excess of 100 to 150 trucks a day, six to seven days a week, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Then many vehicles will only increase the damage to my property and deprive us of the use of the property because of damages that continue to create without due regard.
Okay, Mr. Haramio, if you could wrap it up?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Perovich runs that same type of business a short distance away and has been providing those services to Taos County and others for years without any hesitation. An asphalt plant next to the Rio Grande del Norte National Monument is wildlife refugees, as well as the hiking trails and the world famous Rio Grande Gorge, which will only create a nuisance to those areas and to the neighboring communities that the beautiful, and the beautiful scenery. We respectfully request, ask that the careful consideration be given to this application, and the careful consideration be given to all the factors surrounding our denial for placement of an asphalt plant in that location. It has been shown that Mr. Perovich will sidestep requirements imposed on him for his benefit without due regard for others. Mr. Chairman, this is one of the reasons that we are, um, asking that this application should be withdrawn. It was also mentioned, and I just want to mention real quickly, that there was conditions that were placed by the state in New Mexico to mitigate dust control. Mr. Perovich in his application stated that there is a, uh, a well within the area down there that he will, well, use as a water source. That water well does not belong to him. It belongs to Mr. Fuel, and Mr. Fuel has denied any use of that water. Any water coming from there will be from his current location, which is on 64 and 150. There is no water there for them to do.
Thank you, Mr. Haramio.
Thank you.
Mr., uh, I'd like to give Mr. Perovich an opportunity. His name was mentioned several times if he would like to comment. You have five minutes.
Morning. My name is Joel Perovich. I'm the owner of Taos Gravel Products. Oh, excuse me. I guess I gotta get this one.
Do you swear and affirm under oath and penalty of law that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual? Please state your name for the record.
Joel Perovich. Anyway, my name is Joel Perovich. I'm the owner of Taos Gravel Products. And, uh, in talking what, uh, Mr. Haramio spoke about, uh, the, the water situation, we buy water from El Prado Water, and we transport it in tankers to our location for dust mitigation and, uh, also use water in the plant, some, some water in the plant. And, uh, we, we're regulated very strictly by air quality, and I, I don't disagree with what Mrs. Poppen says about the dust and the wind. Uh, her road, On Toon Drive, gets just as dusty as our road does. And, uh, it's, it's just, we, we can't control the weather, but there are restrictions as to certain, certain, you know, if it's a high wind day, we usually don't run because it, it does get out of control, and, and I want to commit to these people that we will try to do our best to maintain that situation. And other than that, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perovich. Anyone else present like to speak? Go back there with the hat. You have three minutes.
Thank you.
Do you swear and affirm under oath and penalty of law that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual?
Yes, ma'am.
Please state your name for the record.
My name's John Adams. It's gonna be short and sweet. I've been on the Double D Ranch for about the last 18 years, running my cattle on that ranch, and we're really, really close to Joey's yard over there. And from everything in my experience, he's a really good operator. Everything that I understand about the man, when it became a dust control problem, he paved the road. So I think this is kind of much to do about nothing here, really. I'm more concerned about the hundreds of thousands of tires that would be buried, being buried in the ground to build houses out of, if we want to talk about health concerns. I'm not seeing what these people are talking about, and I'm out there every day with my cows. You know, we got a national monument that they're talking about that's dead, dying and decaying. It's not, it's, it, what is it? It's a hiking trail through the sagebrush. That's what it is. So these concerns against a man that's been in business in this town, that employs people, that contributes to this community in huge ways, huge. These concerns are, he's protected under state law. I don't know that there's a jurisdiction here. I didn't even plan to come up and talk about this issue. That's not why I'm here. But the more I sat back there and the more I heard this, the more it pissed me off. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anyone on the appellate side like to speak? Yes, uh, in the pink, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Julie LeBlanc. Uh, I'm a resident on Toon Drive.
Okay, do you swear and affirm under oath and penalty of law that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual?
Yes.
Please state your name for the record.
Okay, Julie LeBlanc. Good morning. Uh, I'm a resident on Toon Drive. I also am the president of the Road Association of Toon Drive. And, uh, so I know all of the people that live along Toon Drive. And yes, there is a little dust that's raised, but since the, um, gate has been put up to get down to the Rio Grande, uh, we have less traffic, so we don't have as much dust. The number of people that own houses there has increased over the years. So in 1991, there were three houses. On Toon Drive, there are over 100 houses now. And along Cali Philiberto, which is the next street over, there are probably 45, 50 houses. So there, in addition to that, there are property owners all along there that want to develop and put a house on there at some point. So, you know, we have rights too. We are all paying taxes. We all contribute. There are many people out there like myself who put in thousands of hours of voluntary service to the community. I have worked with, as a CASA, a court-appointed special advocate for foster children for years. So it isn't, we all sit out there and don't do anything for the community. We do. We do a lot. And we also go to restaurants. We also go to grocery stores. We also buy stuff. So we're all contributing. So for someone to get up here and say that, uh, there's, this person contributes alone, it's just not true. So we have at least probably 150 houses out there. They're all contributing to the community. And there are people like me who contribute beyond that in voluntary services. We should have a say in what is happening in our community. I think that it's fine for people to operate a business. Surely, we don't want to deny them the opportunity to make money. That's not the issue. We're asking them to go one step further and do a special permit. Okay, the reason they don't want to do it is it means they have to go through several other loopholes. Please make them do a special permit for the sake of the whole community, which is growing and wants to grow. We've had letters come back to the community that because of this asphalt plant going in, they're, they're thinking about not building now and getting rid of the, their property. I don't think we all want to see that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Is, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, go ahead. Come forward.
Do you swear and affirm under oath and penalty of law that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual?
Yes, I do. My name is Ronald Soskin, and I'm a resident of Stagecoach Hills. While most of us are not experts, we do have common sense. And when, this weekend, I read through the, all of the documents from the prior hearings, one particular thing stood out to me as making no sense whatsoever. And it was used as a legal basis for the findings and for the arguments made. And that is that an asphalt plant falls under the definition of mining or is an incidental use to a gravel pit. It just didn't make any sense to me, so I decided to look into that. In an article in Pit and Quarry Magazine, which discussing the jurisdiction of the Federal Mine Safety Health Administration, they gave an example of jurisdiction. They said, here's a company, has 100,000 acres, it farms on some of it, it has a quarry, it has an asphalt plant. However, the jurisdiction of Misha, the Mine Safety Health Administration, was limited to just the quarry because the others, the farm operations and the asphalt plant are not functionally, are not functioning distinct from, their functioning is distinct from the mining operation. So I looked further. In the federal government in 1979, there was an interagency agreement between Misha and OSHA, which is the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, discussing the jurisdiction. When it comes to mines and mineral extraction, that jurisdiction is under Misha. When it comes to asphalt plants, whether or not on the mining property, that jurisdiction is under OSHA. 20 years later, a group got together of some prominent individuals in a, on an advisory committee to review that. And what they noted was that the intent of the government was that the definition of mining be extremely broad. But despite the very broad definition of mining, it still did not encompass an asphalt plant. So here we have common sense at the federal government level, clearly treating mining operations and mineral, uh, extraction and gravel pits as totally separate from asphalt plants and governed under two completely different agencies. So the findings below and the arguments being made seem to have no common sense. I did want to touch just a little bit upon tourism because Taos is such a beautiful place, and it relies heavily on tourism. And what are we going to do when tourists come? We have, you look at TripAdvisor, a national platform which lists the bridge as one of the top five tourist sites in the entire state of New Mexico. We're gonna have tourists coming out for scenic beauty and seeing an asphalt plant bordering our great national monument. We're gonna have tourists breathing in Noxus fumes. We're gonna have tourists seeing smoke emanating from a plant and wafting over the Rio Grande River. We're gonna have tourists who, who crowd the bridge going from one end to the other to look down at the beautiful Rio Grande River, dodging this increased massive truck traffic that's being, that will be crossing the bridge. We're talking about common sense here. There is no common sense in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, come forward.
Do you swear and affirm under oath and penalty of law that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual?
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Daniel Torres. I'm a member of the Trust, the Torres Trust. Actually, I'm the eldest, uh, child of one Torres. Speaking of common sense, you know, that gravel pit has been there for, what, 20 plus years? And you've had people move in on, on, or downwind from there? That's not common sense. If you, if you don't like the smell of, of, of dust or asphalt, why do you move next, why do you move in the vicinity? There has been asphalt. When he paid, when he paved the West Rim Road, he had the asphalt right there. You know, the, it, it is used temporarily, like has been said, but then that's, that depends on where he has to haul the asphalt to. Like now, either asphalt is going to 285. So, you know, if you, the further you have to travel, the, the colder it gets. So you need to have it close to, to where you're working so that, um, you can stay in business, you know? That's all.
Thank you. Yes, in, with your hand raised, yes, uh, in the, in the blue top.
Do you swear and affirm under oath and penalty of law that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Linda Thompson. I'm a member of Stagecoach Hills. I have been there for 21 years. And I'm, my opinion is the same as this woman who sent this. She's a member of the Stagecoach Board, and she couldn't come, so she asked me to read her comments. Her name is Kim Stevens, and she also has a home on Toon Drive. "Thank you so much for this opportunity to express my thoughts, actually my amazement, that simply following the land use regulations has proven to be so difficult. This process has taken hours of time by everyone involved and should never have reached this level of appeal. I realize that sometimes laws are difficult to apply in certain cases because the case might be highly unusual or because the laws are poorly written and difficult to interpret. But this is not an extraordinary situation, and the laws are very well-written and easy to interpret. My appreciation goes out to the staff who wrote them and the elected officials who approved them. The law states that all temporary asphalt plants require special use permits. This is a temporary asphalt plant, and it requires a special use permit. I really don't see any ambiguity. And if that section isn't clear enough, another section requires a special use permit for any new or existing mining operation that desires to add processing. This is an existing mining operation that desires to add processing. I must be missing something because it seems so straightforward to me. None of the baffling reasoning presented here by the county or by Mr. Perovich is needed. Commissioners, you are not being asked to deny the asphalt plant. You are just being asked to give the county, planning department, and the public a chance for more careful deliberation by having the applicant go through the special use permitting process. That's all. The decision could have been made at the staff level, but for some reason, rather than reading and applying the regulations, some very strange and illogical reasoning was applied. It seems there was a tremendous amount of effort spent to avoid making the obvious decision to avoid simply having Mr. Perovich obtain the required special use permit. Now, it is up to you, the commissioners, to make sure the laws of Taos County are followed. I am confident you will do the right thing." Kim Stevens. Thank you.
Anyone else present? Okay.
My name is Kelly Pashalk, and I'm from Hondo Mesa.
Do you swear and affirm under oath and penalty of law that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual?
Yes. Well, all we're asking is for a little more consideration for a special use permit. I see a lot of dust out on Hondo Mesa, and I drive into town once or twice a week and go by the asphalt plant that's on the corner of 522 and 64. Sometimes I can hardly breathe just driving by that smaller plant. And I buy a lot of gravel from you, and I appreciate your business. I really do. And I'm not saying don't ever have another asphalt plant. I'm just saying don't put it right next to our Rio Grande. We have not only our community to think about, but we also have to think about the communities downriver, the species living in the river and around the river. We have to think about the ranchers and the cattle that is being raised that are going to be taking in all of these toxic pollution in the air and on the soil. Today, we started out speaking about the children of this community. Don't they have a right to have clean air, clean water, and clean soil as they grow up? What about the noise pollution and the light pollution that we're already having to deal with out on the mesa? I just think this needs a little more consideration and a bigger view and not short-sightedness. So thank you for just having a little congruency, taking care of our community, the young ones, the old ones, the four-leggeds, and the vind.
Thank you. Bobby Ortega.
Do you swear and affirm under oath and penalty of law that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual?
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Yes, ma'am. Bobby Ortega. I'm a resident of Costa. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I, too, like Mr. Adams, feel compelled to at least comment on the issue at hand today. As I'm listening, I'm thinking about the impact and the effect of gravel pits in our community. If you look around, think about the conditions of our streets and highways in this area. They're in horrible shape. We talk about the need for growth, more and more new homes. All that base course, all that pit run that builds these homes is coming from these gravel pits. There's not that many around. There's the Vahil pit, the Medina pit is in even closer proximity than what the Perovich pit is across the road. I think we need to take those things into consideration when we're making these actions of the economic benefit that this pit or pits will make in our communities. Just think of us not having somebody like Perovich operating and having to bring asphalt from Hispaniola. That's what happens sometimes and the cost of that. I think we have a benefit of having these producers in our community, and I think the economic impact is something that needs to be considered when you're making these decisions. You know, in all respect to the folks that are protesting this, due respect. You know, this pit was there before many of these homes were built. And it existed. I think that's where you're talking about a grandfathered pit. Everybody knew that this pit was there, asphalt plants have been there. And I just ask you to take that into consideration when you make your final decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ortega.
Do you swear and affirm under oath and penalty of law that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual?
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Douglas Daubert, and I live on Calle Filiberto. I probably live closest to anybody to the gravel pit. And I would like to say I've used Mr. Perovich's company. I've had a wonderful relationship with him and buying his products, and he does a wonderful job with that. None of this is about the gravel pit. This is about the asphalt plant in the gravel pit. We've heard lots of people talking about, coming up and saying, gravel pit's been there for a while. I've been there since 2007, and quite frankly, I'd have to ask Mr. Romero if he can answer this question. From what I understand, the gravel pit, the asphalt is going to be seven to seven, seven days a week, 365. Is that correct, the application?
Go ahead, but we're really in the public portion.
That's my understanding, that it's that much. If that's the case, is that, is there a limit to the 365? Or is that a continuous? Is he going to be able to continually run that after that? We've already seen that it's been a, we'll use his word, intermittent. It's been there twice, okay? Will it be there permanently afterwards? Does this permit then allow him to continue that for more than 365 days? The other thing is, seven to seven. I get up every morning. At 6 o'clock, I go out. I would ask Mr. Perovich if he would start the gravel pit crusher at 7 o'clock and not before that, especially in the summertime when it's, my windows are open to cool my house down, and I've been woken up by that. I can only imagine waking up to the smell of asphalt before 7 o'clock. Okay? Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Anyone else like to speak? If not, we'll open it up to anyone on the, is there one more? Okay, one.
Hi.
Do you swear and affirm under oath and penalty of law that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual?
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Elizabeth Ashton Wolf. I live on Hondo Mesa. My home was built in 1982. So I don't know, I'm sure the gravel plant was there, but I don't think the asphalt plant was. So I know we're all really hungry. I just, I want to sort of mirror what a lot of the people in the community are saying. I understand that there's, you know, everyone's standing up for the gravel plant. No one's saying no to the gravel. I think what we're saying no to is the asphalt because of the toxic fumes that can come. I also have concerns, is this going to be temporary? And will it be moved, or will it be permanent and happening all the time? Do we know?
It actually moves at work.
So it will be moved?
There's a chance it could be.
Could be. But it also could be permanent all the time.
If we've got something we need to go keep sure.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry. Forgive me.
You ordered a pellet, but, so it's complicated, but just...
Okay, all right. Well, that's my concern, is that it's not going to be moving around like it has been in the past to give it that grandfathered-in clause, that it is actually going to be permanent. And that really concerns me. So I just wanted to state that the Federal Environmental Protection Agency states that asphalt processing and asphalt roofing manufacturing facilities are major sources of hazardous air pollutants such as formaldehyde, hexane, phenol, some other things that I can't even say. Exposure to these air toxins may cause cancer, central nervous system problems, liver damage, respiratory problems, and skin irritation. I have three stepdaughters. They're ages 10, 13, and 15. We live right across the river from this, and it is concerning for me. We also are on the river all the time. We go floating. We see all of our community members out there, you know, swimming and fishing. It's just very close to the river. It's almost too close for my comfort, honestly. And I am concerned about the fumes and respiratory illness and cancer-causing chemicals. So, you know, some people may make fun of that, but I think that those are legitimate concerns. And so I do think that a special use permit would be necessary to maybe get a little hold on this situation if it were to become permanent, seven days a week, seven to seven, 365. That's really concerning. And I would like for there to be a larger, sort of an environmental study done possibly for the health of people living around this plant, if it is going to be in production for that long. Yeah, I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe we do have one, at least one waiting, listening online that would like to call in. And that number is 575-737-6310. So if we could get the person wanting to...
Take it off.
Yes, so I do not disturb. We have to open it up. No, tell.
Okay.
Hold staff. That's cool.
You have to set it down, but you have to take it off. Do not disturb.
Oh, okay. Is there a head on?
Set the caller.
Yes. Go ahead. Okay, okay. Go ahead.
Okay, my name is Sylvie Soulier. I own raw land. We're planning to build in the future. We want to invest in local community and strengthen the economic infrastructure. The implications that this negatively affects our health and the health of our children is a very dangerous risk. It appears the law was not properly...
Hold on, Sylvie.
...to ensure Sylvie knows that we are here. And we are asking respectfully that the Taos County Planning Director's decision is reversed. We have a lung lesion.
Sylvie, can you please hold? You do need to get sworn in.
Yeah.
Sylvie, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. Do you swear and affirm under oath and testimony of law that the testimony, I'm sorry, under oath that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual?
Yes.
Please state your name for the record.
Can you, can you hear me?
No.
We can hear you, but state your name for the record and where you live, Sylvie.
Sylvie Soulier. We own raw land on Toon Drive.
Okay, go ahead.
So what I was saying is, we own raw land that we purchased in 2021, planning to build in the future. We have all intentions of investing in the local community and strengthening the economic infrastructure. We have a son with lung lesions. He is now nine months old. The implication that this will negatively affect our health and the health of our children is an unacceptable risk for money. It appears the law was not properly followed, as others have mentioned, and that we should take precautions to ensure that there will be no detriment caused to the health of the people who live in the area. So I'm asking respectfully that the Taos County Planning Director's decision is reversed and that special consideration be paid or researched to make sure that people who live in this area will not be negatively impacted. Thank you. Also, my partner is deaf and was unable to participate because of lack of interpreting and captioning, so she mirrors my sentiments as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess it was, at this point, is there anyone else that would like to speak that is listening online? And maybe we can get checked, I'll get checked out on the technology here.
There it is.
Hello?
Hello?
Yeah, hi. My name is Richard Goldman, and I, hello?
Okay, yes, would you please wait until you get sworn in?
So there's a delay on their end.
Okay. How long do we wait? If you're on, if you can call back. I guess we'll just go ahead and move on. So at this point then, if there are no further calls, there it is. Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Please state your name and get, you need to get sworn in.
Okay, my name is Tyler Cullenbrake.
Tyler, do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you at all very accurately.
Is the testimony that you're about to give true and factual?
Not yet.
Okay, go ahead.
So as I said, my name is Tyler Cullenbrake. I'm a resident on Toon Drive, and I just, I'm sorry I wasn't able to go to the meeting today. But I wanted to provide a little different perspective. I actually do a lot of permitting for the oil and gas industry, so I'm dealing with a lot of what you're dealing with today as far as private industry and interests running into a public interest. And so typically, when there's a huge public interest involved, something like this, it falls on members of local boards and government to kind of protect the public interest because a lot of times, private industry is just looking to move through the path of least resistance in order to protect their bottom line, which absolutely makes sense from that standpoint. But I would just urge the board today to consider the massive public interest in this case, not only just because of the location near a prime tourist area in the county, but also the location to a recreation area in the national monuments, as well as the homeowners who are there today expressing their concerns about the site. So typically, like I said, in these cases, I would look at kind of who's going to be harmed in that case. And a lot of times, if the public interest outweighs the private interest in that area, typically, I've always found that there's a compromise to be made in a pass forward, whether that means slowing the process down and requiring a special permit. whether that means slowing the process down and requiring a special permit. That can always be done, sometimes it takes a little more time and effort on the private industry side of things, but I'm here to tell you today that there can be a compromise that works for everybody. So I hope the board takes that into consideration today and I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that's listening online that would like to call in? The number is 575-737-6310. Okay, we'll move on, and next is the Director of Planning, Ms. Rachel Romero, to present on the county side.
Thank you, Vice Chair Romero, Commissioners, Mr. Haramio, Mr. Octio. I'll just try to quickly go through this in effort to, to save time. So the appellant has complied with all the applicable public hearing notification requirements as stated in Article 6 and Article 9 of the Taos County Land Use Regulations. The notice of appeal was received on February 13th, 2023, from the agent, meaning the 30-day calendar requirement, the 30 calendar day requirement from the filing of the written decision of the Board of Adjustment with the accompanied required appeal fee. On February 14th, 2023, an email received from the appellant waived their right for the hearing within the 45 calendar day of receipt of the notice of the appeal as required in Section 9.1.2 Subsection G. In accordance with Section 9.1.2 Subsection F, the appellant was responsible for creating all copies of the record, binding all information, and creating a table of contents and page numbers on all consecutive pages that has been presented to the Board of County Commissioners. Because there is a de novo standard of review, relevant new evidence shall be allowed. In addition, the parties of the planning department, the parties and the planning department may present relevant parts of the record to the Board of County Commissioners and such evidence shall be considered de novo. Relevant evidence submitted by the public may also be considered. The appeal hearing will be governed by the appeal hearing procedures found with Section 9.2.1 of Ordinance 2018-2, the Taos County Land Use Regulations, which establish uniform procedures at the appeal hearings before the Board of Adjustment, the Planning Commission, and the Board of County Commissioners. Further, in accordance with Section 9.1.2 Appeals of Decisions of the Board of Adjustment or Planning Commission, Subsection E, the Board of County Commissioners shall affirm, reverse, or affirm with conditions the administrative decision by the Board of Adjustment and the decision must be supported by findings of fact. In affirming, reversing, or affirming with conditions the decision of the Board of Adjustment, the Board of County Commissioners, at the conclusion of the public hearing, will need to make a determination based on Section 3.3.2 Legal Nonconforming Use of Ordinance 2018-2 Taos County Land Use Regulations, which states, "A land use which was lawful before the Taos County Land Use Regulations were passed or under an existing land use regulations, but which would be prohibited, regulated, or restricted under the terms of new regulations and subsequent amendments of the regulations is permitted. The land use must not have been abandoned." Included in the staff's packet is the following, and I'll just have to read through this very quickly so that way it could be entered into the record. So in Exhibit 1, the notice of the public hearing, Appeal-23-001. Exhibit 2, appeal hearing procedures. Exhibit 3, staff review. Exhibit 4, letter of determination from the interim planning director. Exhibit 5, record of decision from the Board of Adjustment. Exhibit 6, minutes of the December 19th, 2022 Board of Adjustment meeting. Exhibit 7, submittals of evidence for nonconforming use. A, affidavit of Joel Perovich packet submitted, May 9th, 2022, and included in that, number 1, their Exhibit A, the pit agreement dated April 25th, 1999. A letter from Juan E. Torres to the Bureau of Land Management dated April 21st, 1998. A pit agreement dated April 25th, 2000. A pit agreement dated April 25th, 2001. A pit agreement dated September 11th, 2006. Number 2, their Exhibit B, 10200, vendor ledger, Torres Living Trust, and Taos Gravel Products vendor quick report. Number 3, Exhibit C, response to relocation application for Taos Gravel Products. Torres Peak City Rapids 8828 Asphalt Plant from Sandy Spoon, Air Permit Specialist, New Mexico Environment Department, Air Quality Bureau, dated May 1st, 1999. The response to relocation notification for Taos Gravel Products, Portable Asphalt Plant 2, GCP-3-4509, from Denise Huff, Permit Specialist, New Mexico Environment Department, Air Quality Bureau, dated April 24th, 2019. An email from DePica, and I'm going to mispronounce your name, Shishkran, Enviro, Environmental Scientist, New Mexico Environmental Department, Air Quality Bureau, dated April 27th, 2022, regarding asphalt plant relocations. Air Quality General Permit, N O R E 01, 8925, letter from DePica Shishkran, Air Permit Specialist, NM, Environment Department, Air Quality Bureau, dated April 27th, 2022. Number 4, their Exhibit D, Air Quality Permit, 318-M-1, dated August 29th, 1984, from Lee Lockey, Chief, New Mexico Environment Improvement Division, Air Quality Bureau. B, Perovich Properties Incorporated Supplemental Submission Packet, dated June 14th, 2022. Number 1, information and materials in support of vested right. Number 2, affidavit of Rafael Torres. Number 3, affidavit of Joel Perovich. Number 4, letter from EP Luhsinger of Luhsinger Construction Company, dated March 15th, 2000. Number 5, BLM Surface Management Status Ma, 1994 Edition, various Google Earth maps, Earth images, excuse me. Number 6, letter to Taos County Planning Department. Letter C, contract for the cash sale of mineral materials, 1999 contract. D, contract for the sale of mineral materials, 2022 contract. E, general construction permit application. F, GCP-3-4509, RE 02, portable facility relocation dated April 10th, 2019. Exhibit 8, Taos County aerial imagery showing latitude and longitude coordinates. Exhibit 9, public hearing notification requirements. Copy of signed postings, or letter A, copy of signed postings. Letter B, copy of the Santa Fe New Mexican affidavit of publication. C, copy of Taos News affidavit of publication. D, copy of envelopes for the first-class mail notification to adjacent parcel owners. E, copy of letter mailed out to the adjacent landowners. F, the request to waive the 45-day hearing requirements. Exhibit 10, application for appeal and receipt of application fee. Exhibit 11, the appellate packet. Number 1, introduction. Number 2, how the appellate, how is the appellate affected? The location and the environmental. Number 3, specific factual errors and legal errors pertinent to the appeal. A, Section 4.13.3 Subsection O. B, Section 3.3.2.8.1. C, Section 4.14.2.12 and A. D, 3.3.2A. Number 4, the summary. 5, requested action. And 6, exhibits. That was a lot and thank you for that. Included in the report, as I previously mentioned, is my staff report. I believe you all have had the opportunity to go through that and to not reiterate what's already been said, I will stand before you for questions.
Any questions, Commissioners? Apparently we have no questions?
Okay, thank you.
Any, any questions at all for any of the other presenters? Okay, so the, the Commission, at its discretion, does have the option to, to go into executive session to deliberate on this matter. And so we're at the point in time that we need a motion, I guess either to go into executive session or to make a motion otherwise.
Chair or Vice Chair, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session.
I'll second.
Do we, as the appellant, not have the right to respond to Ms. Romero's comments?
You had an opportunity at the end of the presentations to, to cross-examine or respond. We'll give you one minute, go ahead.
Once again, to reiterate, we are not here to refute a gravel pit. And a lot of diversional information has been brought up today, but there are four things as you go into session. All ordinances, all asphalt plants required to have an SUP. No historical continuous or principal use. Those two things have been refuted by the applicant, obviously we don't agree. But the two others that have not been addressed that you have to consider, the footprint has and will increase by more than 25%. This alone requires an SUP. Regardless of continuous or principal use, processing equipment and operations are being added. This alone requires an SUP. So I just respectfully ask that you would consider that when you deliberate on this situation. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Romero, would you like one minute?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. That's completely inaccurate. It's the same size, same machine, same size. That's all I have to say, there's no, there's no increase in size whatsoever. That's essentially it, there's just, there's no change, thank you.
Okay, Ms., there's a motion by Ms. Vaillée to go into executive session, is there a second?
Any second.
Second by Mr. Romero?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaillée?
Yes.
Commissioner Mustarini?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes. Thank you, we'll try to take not more than 15, 20 minutes, we'll limit ourselves, we'll try, thank you.
session.
Motion. Motion by Mr. Romero?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mascherinas. Call roll.
Yes.
Commissioner Cahill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherinas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes. At this point, we need a report from the attorney.
Mr. Vice Chair, commissioners, members of the public, we went into closed session to deliberate this matter. That's the only thing that we did. We complied with all requirements of the Open Meetings Act and did not make a decision and have come back out into open session. Could we get a motion to affirm that?
Motion to accept attorney's report.
Second.
Mr. Romero?
Commissioner.
Is there a second?
Yes. I second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion and second to accept attorney's report. Call roll, please.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Cahill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherinas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes. And at this point, entertain a motion from commissioners.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to deny the appeal of the decision made by the Taos County Board of Adjustment on December 19, 2022.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Mascherinas. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, please call the roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Cahill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherinas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes. And Mr. Adio, I think the next step, he'll explain.
Mr. Chair, we will work with staff to prepare findings of fact and conclusions of law and a final decision to be entered as soon as we can at a next council, next commission meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Adio. And at this point, do we need a break at this point too? Or do we go?
I think, okay, we need to bring our chair back, yes.
Okay, we'll, we'll take a break to get Chair Brush back in the chair position.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for sticking with us and for letting me sit out there for a while, too. That was really, felt good. So, we are now moving on, and thank you, Vice Chair Romero, for taking over. Appreciate your help this, this morning, this afternoon. We are now moving on to Agenda Item 11. And 11A is Discussion Only Regarding the Draft Resolution Number 2023-9, a resolution opposing legislation that would allow for the permanent retirement of grazing permits on public lands. Thank you all for sticking with us up to this point. Commissioner Cahill, do you want to start this off, or are we going to have Ms. Joyce start us off?
I will go ahead and, I'd like to go ahead and start us off.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'd like to start by kind of laying out what has transpired from the very beginning in regards to this topic, just a little bit of an outline for the record and also for those that may have not been here the first time the, this topic came forward. And so I don't have the exact dates, but it's, I'm going to go ahead and estimate, estimate about now. It's about a month and a half ago, I was asked if a presentation could be made in regards to, to the topic today. And I went ahead and said, well, let's, let's put it on the agenda. It's something that we need to certainly listen to, learn about. It was important for commission to understand what was before us. about. It was important for Commission to understand what was before us. And so, I, I was the Commissioner that made that move. And certainly, anyone who knows me knows that anything regarding ag is certainly super important and should be always, you know, looked at in that manner. So, I brought it on to the agenda, and a presentation was made. And that began the, the learning process of what concerns come with the proposed or potential proposal of the legislation piece that apparently had been presented in a prior legislative session in, in, at the congressional level. And so, that was, was, that's what occurred then. And so, I took a little bit more interest realizing that the folks that were before us that day felt like they hadn't been heard. And, and I didn't realize it at that time, I will be honest. As a matter of fact, you might remember that I posed the question, has anyone reached out to Senator Heinrich's office? Because Senator Heinrich was, is the Senator that was putting out that legislation piece. And so, I, I found out during that presentation that many of you had been talking to Senator, Senator Heinrich's office. And, and so anyways, I had been in DC, just to kind of move on, this is just a real quick summary. I was in DC thereafter, Commissioner Brush, or Chair Brush and I, on a different, for a different reason, but we took the opportunity to meet with Heinrich's office while we were there and talk about the concerns regarding this potential bill and what it would do for the grazing, for the ag world. And so, our ask at that time was that a public meeting be held here in Taos County to answer any questions and concerns. And so, when we got back to Taos, Heinrich's office reached out to us and basically said they were willing to, and, you know, they, they would go ahead and do a public meeting. And I'm hoping that I'm recollecting correctly, but that is what I recollect. And please, Chair, if I misspeak, please let me know. So anyways, I, I thought, you know, this was an opportunity for all of us to really talk about those concerns, right? I'm, I'm still in learning mode during that period of time. And we went ahead and thought we were at a point where we could schedule some meetings, or a public meeting. We were trying to coordinate all of that, but nonetheless, I was back in DC again on a different matter, and I took another opportunity. I took the opportunity to speak to Heinrich's office again. And at that time, Counselor Corelia, Corelia Ortega was with me, so we both were able to speak on behalf of Taos. And just basically, it was, we need to have this conversation. That was what it was about. You know, there's a big concern. We, we, you know, the people of Taos deserve this space in which to be heard and to ask questions. And I thought that would be an opportunity for Commissioners as well. Well, time passed, and we, we thought we had nailed down a date. We were told that this is gonna happen. And at that time, it was during Holy Week, and, and it just wasn't gonna work with people's schedules. So, what we did is we were waiting for another date to be presented, and for some reason, communication broke down, and we never received any communication in regards to the, to, that it was gonna switch to a different method. It wasn't gonna be a public meeting per se, but a bunch of different little tiny meetings. And, and so, I was asked to bring this back. And, and to be honest with you, I felt that same frustration that each and every one of you felt. And so, I'm just being honest, it was very frustrating because as a representative of the people, I felt that it was our responsibility to, to have that space to, to listen to each and every one of you. So, what has transpired from that point after it was, I had requested it be on the agenda, I received a, I received a call from Heinrich's office and Senator Heinrich himself. And at that time, it was very brief, but it was very clear that he would pull that legislation piece and that he had the same, you know, respect and, and, and also, he wanted to make sure that you all had that, that opportunity. So, I'm gonna read the letter. It'll, it'll say, and you probably have already read it, but the point being is that Senator Heinrich did in fact want us to know that he would give us that opportunity and would pull that piece off. I'm gonna go ahead and read the letter. It just might be a little bit easier. So, the letter reads as follows. It says, "Hi Commissioner Vehill," and this letter is dated April 13th, Thursday, April 13, 2023. "Hi Commissioner Vehill, Senator Heinrich sends his thanks for the conversation today. As you and he discussed, Senator Heinrich will wait to make any decisions about reintroducing the grazing permit retirement bill until after his team hears from you and others in the community. He really appreciates the meetings. You have helped his team set up for April 19, and he is hopeful that we continue to have a constructive and reasonable dialogue. Senator Heinrich cares about Taos community a great deal and knows how much you do also. He is fully committed to finding solutions that work for everyone." It is important for you all to know that as a representative, one of the most important things for us is to be able to come around a table and really talk about the issues. I know right now there are mixed feelings out there, and I know that you all have been working on this for quite some time, so frustration has set it, set in for sure. And unfortunately, when it gets to this point, it's almost like you have to clear the air before you can actually get to the issue. And I think that's where we're at. The ask has been that we have, start having these, these smaller community meetings. And I, what I really want to tell you all is that I hope that you know that we are here for you. We are your representatives. And I, I, I think that it is important that we allow this process to happen. I believe this is a win, guys, I really do. I, I, I will tell you also that this is bigger than, than anything, that it's not just so much the topic, but it's bigger than that. And that is that it's a reminder to those that represent you that we are here to listen. We are here to have these discussions, give you the space to share your thoughts and concerns, and then we, at that point, have to decide what needs to be done. And so, I will assure you that even though the ask was a big, large public meeting, and that may come, it's not off the table, just as it coming back to the Commission for a vote is not off the table. But what's on the table right now is that we're able to start really talking about the concern about this potential legislation piece. And the bigger picture is that going forward, that we are reminded that we should, that we are reminded who we represent and why we are here. And so, I hope that you have trust that we are here for you, and we are going to be watching this very closely and making sure that you have that opportunity to voice your opinion and your concerns, and hopefully even some resolution. And, but, as you, you have all heard, there is a commitment here, and I think that's, that's big. So, thank you very much. Appreciate your.
Thank you, Commissioner Vehill. Is Jillian still here?
Yeah, there you are. She better be.
Yeah. Would you like to? Is that better? Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners, County Manager. Thank you guys so much for this opportunity to stand in front of you once again on what I think is a deeply important matter for our community and for the future of our agricultural community. I would like to start by thanking you for elevating the voices of our agricultural community in your willingness to put this on the agenda, in your communications with Senator Heinrich's office, and particularly Commissioner Vehill, in your efforts in negotiating an opportunity for what we hope will be extensive and inclusive community dialogue on this matter with the Senator's office. The agricultural community of Taos has been working to be heard by the Senator's office on this matter for nearly a year, and the agricultural community across the state has been working even longer. But it has been the support of this body for public dialogue on the issue that has been most impactful. So, truly, thank you. You have in your packet for today's meeting our letter of opposition and the names of all of the organizations and individuals who had signed on as of 12:30 PM on Friday, the 14th. Since that time, the number of signatures has increased by more than 25, and new signatories of note include Taos County Farm and Livestock Bureau, the Santa Barbara Grazing Association of Penasco, AIRE, and the New Mexico Food and Agriculture Policy Council. As you can see among the organizations who have signed on, there is incredible consensus in our agricultural community across the state that the concept of permanent retirement of grazing permits on public lands, particularly by private entities and without consideration for the state or best use of the resource or the needs of the community, is fundamentally problematic policy. You can also see there is a broad and diverse opposition to the reintroduction of this bill from across our county. Organizations, businesses, farmers, ranchers, and concerned citizens from all corners of the county, all walks of life, and of every political stripe have added their names to our letter. Proponents of this bill will point out that participation in grazing retirement is voluntary, which, in the narrowest sense, it is. The bill relies on willing buyers and willing sellers, but fundamentally, it is not voluntary at all. We are talking about our shared, public lands. And no individual seller or individual buyer should be able to volunteer the retirement of a form of public access on behalf of our citizenry to whom these lands actually belong. We believe that allowing private individuals and entities to make permanent decisions affecting our, our public lands is simply not good policy. We believe allowing decisions to be made for our public lands without consideration of data on the state or best use of the resource and without opportunities for the public to weigh in is not good policy. We believe that policy that fails to take into account historical and cultural ties to the land and the history of displacement from the land is not good policy. We acknowledge that there are indeed a few permates in our state who would benefit from the passage of this legislation. However, the long-term negative impact on the agricultural community overall would be too great. While retirement of 10 permits per year may seem small, it will have a cumulative effect over time that will absolutely undermine the health of what remains of our agricultural economy. It will be particularly impactful in Taos County and other areas of the state with a high percentage of public land and very high private land costs. We stand here in hope that this is the beginning of a new era in the conversation around this bill, and in faith that you, our Commissioners, will continue to stand with us as we work for a more inclusive conversation and better policy that effectively addresses the needs on the ground for the future of food security and food production in our region, for cultural and historical ties to working lands, and for the long-term health of our shared natural resources. We thank you for holding on to the resolution and being willing to bring it up for a vote in the future in the event the outreach efforts by Senator Heinrich's office are not extensive, inclusive, and/or in the event the end result fails to represent the people most impacted by this legislation. With that, I am happy to stand for questions, or better yet, give our community members who have come out today the opportunity to share with you their concerns, stories, and hopes for a better process moving forward. Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Jillian? No. Okay, then let's move into this portion of the agenda's public comment. And just as a reminder, when you do come up, please state your name, where you live, and we'll be timing for three minutes, just because you've all already been here a long time. And when you have 20 to 30 seconds left, I will raise my glass to you to just kind of signal to you to start completing, completing your thought. And just one other point, like procedural point, I know last time we had to, or I chose to cut some people off and say you can't have a, a second turn. We're gonna do that again today and say, okay, one shot, everyone, one, three minutes. Otherwise, we're going, otherwise, the only fair thing to do would be to keep going on until no one has anything left to say. And I do not want to be in the position of saying, you get the last word. So, we're gonna say, one, one shot at the podium, three minutes. Thank you for sticking with this meeting and for sharing whatever you are about to share. Thank you for being here. Yeah, I wanna remember your name, where you're from, and watch for the toast.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Robert Martinez. I am a sixth-generation rancher in the Taos Valley. And I would encourage you to, to pass a resolution, not necessarily focused only on, on Senate Bill 2980, but in general, the retirement of grazing permits on public lands. And reason I say so is bills may come and go, but this needs to be a principle that this county stands for, I believe. The, I had an opportunity since we met last here to, to meet with the Camino Real Ranger, Michael Luhon. And I asked him the question, so what role does grazing fill within the, within the management of the Forest Service? He said, his reply was, it's an important tool. It's a tool we use to manage the forest. To have healthy rangelands, you need livestock grazing. It, it's, it contributes to the soil health. There are soil health initiatives and research going on, not only within this country, but globally, quite successfully, with, with wonderful results in terms of case studies. In each one, livestock grazing enhances the health of the soil. It's a positive, okay? Besides that, it reduces the fuel load in terms of, of forest fire as well. Now, after the last time we met, the following day, we had a listening session with the, the young lady that presented to you from Livestock Guardians. It turned out to be a four-hour listening session. And, and in that, the very, I asked her the very first question after her initial statement was, can you state the detriment that a cow grazing on forest or rangeland produces? She could not answer. After four hours, somebody else in the crowd asked her the same question. You never answered his question, and she still couldn't answer the question. Because frankly, livestock grazing has been shown to be beneficial. Okay. Last thing I would say is that these grazing allotments are critical to small ranchers like ourselves in northern New Mexico. We require those lands in order to provide that summer grazing so that we can grow our winter feed. We provide economic impact into this community. And here's the thing is, the county is supporting an initiative for livestock processing, mobile matanza, and so that we can generate more, more revenue to keep ranchers profitable. Those cattle will be grazed on these public lands. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Okay. Who would like to go next? Again, name and where you live, and we'll start.
Do I have to be under oath? Thank you, Commissioner Vehill, for that message. We certainly appreciate. And I'm here before, on behalf of a lot of these farmers and ranchers in northern New Mexico, we're not here before this governing body for a handout. We are just merely asking, we need your help. And I think it's very important, most of you individuals are the or the overall commissioners reside within the farming and ranching communities. And we urge you that to put Resolution 2980 back on the books or on the agenda at some point, either do an up or down vote, and make sure that the industry, the farming and ranching communities are in the crossroads of nonexistent. And this is the reason we're before this governing body all the way through the nation, the state, and Taos County. You have a... These are your voices, and these are your constituents. And we just merely ask for your help. Thank you, and please, please hear our voices. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Appreciate it. Who would like to go next? Okay. First, Mr. Aquio, and then Mr. Adams.
My name is Carlos Arroyo. I'm a commissioner on the Aseca del Monte del Río Chiquito and a board member of the Taos Valley Aseca Association. And I live in the Talpa Rancho area. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. I prepared some notes here. We here in the Taos Valley and surrounding communities are living in a unique cultural diorama that has taken centuries to form. Our neighbors across the cattle guard have been here since time immemorial. Some of us have family legacies that go back centuries. My ancestors in the mid-1800s settled in the Upper Valdes Valley, known at that time as San Antonio. On my mother's side, my great-grandfather and great-great-grandfather were full Italians. During those times, families summer pastured their livestock on Upper Hondo Canyon and up to Twining. The third canyon going up, the Rio Hondo Canyon, was traditionally used by my ancestral family. Consequently, it became known as Italiano's Canyon. In addition to livestock grazing, forest products such as vigas, firewoods, and other forest products were gathered. Families were able to create thriving communities. I mention this because this is just but one example of many from across the valley and beyond on how this cultural diorama was formed. Livestock grazing was and continues to be an integral part of our traditional use of public lands. It is an organic method of effective fire mitigation, as mentioned by my previous speaker. In Senate Bill 2980, I see the pendulum swinging too far in management of traditional livestock uses on public lands. I stand against Senate Bill 2980 or similar legislation in its current form and hereby request that they consider the support of Senate Bill 2980 seriously. Some people move here because they are attracted to the unique cultural diorama that I mentioned and gladly acclimate into the culture. Others see it as an economic opportunity for tourism, real estate opportunities, and recreational opportunities and have the financial prowess to move their interests forward. I see Senate Bill 2980 as a misguided assault on the traditional aspect of this cultural diorama that has formed Taos Valley into the place that we love as much as we do. Que viva la herencia, la creencia.
Thank you, Mr. Aquio. Mr. Adams. And again, if you'd just for the record, state your name and where you're from, where you live.
John Adams, and I'm from Taos. I'm basically a lifelong rancher. I don't have a dog in this fight. I've never owned a permit in my life. But I am a rancher. Historically, my family did it all on private land. But I know most of these guys, and I understand how it works. So my comments come from a little bit different angle. I am trained in holistic management. I've spent a lifetime learning how to build soil with the use of animals as that mechanism to do that with. And if we don't build soil, then all this talk about global warming, it's moot. It's wasted time. It's wasted energy. We have to build soil in this world. I mentioned earlier in the last subject, the National Monument, it's dying. It's dead. It's sagebrush. And since they took cattle off of it, it's gotten worse. And it's going to continue to get worse because cattle are the mechanism to reintroduce dead, dying, and decaying material back into the soil, which, for layman's terms, is fertilizer. So I didn't understand this at one time, so I want to ask you, Commissioners, and I understand you can't answer questions, but I want you to just ask yourselves this question. Do you understand what ecosystems means? Because I didn't really, until I started studying this. And ecosystems can mean a pasture. It can mean a meadow. It can mean a forest. It can mean an aspen grove. Those are all ecosystems in their own respect. So how do cattle affect that, negatively or positively? Grazing, overgrazing, or overresting? It's the only three ways there is with respect to cattle. So I want you guys to all ask yourself one other question. Which is the most detrimental of those three? Grazing, overgrazing, or overresting? I'm going to continue that it's overresting. So I'm going to ask you to support this idea that these people bring to this table. I'm going to ask you to support this resolution because this is going from one extreme to another. Environmentalist groups want to lead you to a completely different extreme. They want to take grazing ungulates off the land in order to achieve their personal recreational goals. Three minutes is not nearly enough to say what I needed to say, but I urge you to really support this. I have a son in high school that's leaving because there is no opportunity here for him. He's going to go to Texas. He's going to get a degree at Eastern New Mexico University. He's going to go to Texas and be a rancher there. Because there's no... Senator Heinrich is not coming up with ideas for our youth how to put them in the ranching business.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Okay, who do we have? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Randy Schofield. I'm a third-generation rancher from Tres Piedras and also a convicted elk poacher. You can ask the judge back there about that, so... Anyway, we do not need to retire any allotments. We need two things. We just need common sense management. Any one of these guys can go out there and look at the ground and say, okay, it's ready to graze, or it's not ready to graze. But our government agencies have these rules, regulations, everything else they have to follow sometimes. The other thing we need is accountability for those people. I'll give you a fine example. Last year, when the fire started down in Santa Fe, what happened to the guy that gave the go-ahead to do it? He's transferred somewhere else, probably still getting his full paycheck, everything else, so... As far as we go, we take care of the land. You can ask BLM out there. There's been several years. It's been dry. We haven't grazed because there wasn't nothing to graze. There's also been several years that we've cut our herd, and we haven't had it built back yet due to the drought. So this idea of retiring allotments, it's... Let's work with the land. Let's have some common sense. That's all we need. I had a whole bunch of things running in my mind, but they're running up there somewhere, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schofield.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Commissioners, thank you, Ms. Vahill, for making that effort and going out there and speaking on behalf of us ranchers and farmers. My name is Paula Martinez. I am a fifth-generation rancher. And I live on Camino de Medio. We run about 50 head of black Angus cattle. We were highly affected by the fire last year. We were unable to take our cattle up to graze in the mountains, so we had to look for lower land. And that's not to say that when we do take our animals up to go graze in the higher country, we, as permities, take care of that property. We fence. We are always picking up trash. So when these other individuals come into perspective and come into play and say that our animals are causing disruption, they're destroying the environment, they are creating, what is it? The thermal gas that the cows create. In all reality, let's look at it in a different perspective because if you go up there... Well, when we go up there, us ranchers, permities, holders, the majority of things that you see up there are not from our animals. It's from us humans. We are destroying our lands. We are loitering, polluting the public lands. That these individuals are coming in and saying, your animals are ruining all of... They're polluting our water. They're overgrazing your allotments. No, it isn't our animals. It is us that are destroying our public lands. And I would like for you to take that back to Senator Heinrich and say, you know, all these individuals who want to come do environmental impact studies to these different locations, oh, this place is a historical landmark. But do they realize that we are providing our communities outside resources, the very natural, organic foods that these people complain about? That they, oh, we have to have organic. Oh, we need to eat non-GMO foods. We need to have non-antibiotic beef products. How can we not provide that to our local community stores if we don't have the proper necessities as far as like the... How can we even feed our animals? GMO corn. Sorry, excuse me. But just please, take this to them and let them know we are a dying breed. We need to allow our children to know that this is something that we need to continue in order to feed the rest of our community healthy food, farm. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Sam Disgiorgis. I represent the Taos Valley Aseca Association. We have 54 member Aseca's. And I could get into all the nuances and the interests that the Aseca's have in this issue. But what we do want to do is express our thanks for the opportunity to have a continued discussion about this specific issue and so that we can build something better with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Disgiorgis.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Commissioners, my name is Bobby Ortega. I'm a lifelong resident of Cuesta. I'm also the president of the Cuesta Citizens Ditch Association, and I'm a grazing permity. I'd like to start by thanking Commissioner Vahill for her efforts in trying to further our cause. I would actually, honestly, would hope that we had had a meeting today to consider the resolution. But be that as it may, as I was coming down here today, I was thinking, why am I here today? Or why am I going today? And I quickly thought about my... This past weekend, my family branded on Sunday. There was family members there. There was neighbors. There was vecinos. There was a lot of people that came out for a branding. On Saturday, we worked on our Aseca tradition that's been going on for a long time. And I think all of you that do that can relate to how important that way of life is. And that's why I'm here today, and that's why I will continue to be here, is to fight to protect the way of life in northern New Mexico. So with that, I just want to say that the Wildlife Conflict Resolution Act as proposed is bad legislation that's being proposed with the real agenda, I feel, to eliminate livestock grazing on public lands. You can call it what you want, but I think at the end of the day, that's the real agenda. The other question I would ask is, why is this being only proposed in New Mexico? Grazing permits exist in most western states, but this legislation is being singled out to New Mexico. We ask ourselves, is it because the majority of the permities that are affected are multi-generational Hispanic families? That are descendants of land grants that were promised access to public lands for traditional uses under the Treaty of Guadalupe Hidalgo? You could say that. I mean, you look at the rankings in Taos County of who has permits on the force of the BLM. It's majority is Hispanics. Hispanic families that have been here for generations. I feel that the proposed legislation[1543.38] I feel that the proposed legislation is direct threat attack to a way of life as existing in our historical and cultural communities in northern New Mexico. This is a way of life that includes our small farms that are nurtured by the Asecas that bring life to our valleys. I can tell you as a president of the association that grazing in the Asecas go hand in hand in our communities. Our Aseca water rights are being threatened by outside groups wanting to take them out of our valleys. And now this act, livestock grazing is in the crosshairs of those wanting livestock off of public lands. Be aware, this is just the beginning of efforts to achieve their agenda. You will be told that this is voluntarily, but if you dig deeper, you'll understand this is a well-organized effort by many special interest groups that do not want grazing on public lands. Don't be fooled by, for one minute, but what, by what is the real intent? I've run out of time. Commissioners, thank you for your time. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Ortega.
Pardon the interruption, Chair. Been in communication with Rita O'Connell, who works for Senator Heinrich. She did ask for a list of names that want to have the small meetings that Commissioner Veal referred to. So my staff's making a, a name, phone number, email list. So don't leave if you want to be included in those sessions with Heinrich's staff. So stick around, that list will come in a few minutes.
Thank you, Brent. Appreciate that. Okay. You guys, you guys decide who goes first.
Good afternoon. My name is Manla Kios Royal. I am from Cuesta. I'm currently the Chair of the Cuesta Economic Development Fund. Back in two thousand eight, when we did start the development fund, we were trying to see how we can diversify our economy in northern New Mexico because we knew what the ups and downs of mining economy can do to, to Cuesta and places like that. We found that one of our major factors was that we would also have the agriculture and farming ranching community grow in our, in our area. And I'm asking you to stop this assault on our community because what this does is just takes one other aspect of how people can make a living in northern New Mexico. Because we all know, if anybody knows all these people here, is that they have more than one job. They have to find more than one way to make a living in this community because it's rough and tough, but these people are rough and tough. One thing they have is common sense and they know when to graze and not to graze, when to farm and to farm less. They have common sense. Sometimes we are presented with legislations that are guided by the twins of ignorance and arrogance because they think that they know more, they know enough, but they always have that one relative that's missing. The twins have one relative missing, that relative is common sense. These folks have common sense and they understand that. Give them every chance to fight this assault on our communities. We know that what it, how important it is for our areas to have grazing and ranching and farming in there. Our state is occupied, is owned by the federal government, seventy percent of it. So you just can't go out there and buy ten thousand acres and graze your community, graze your cows or your cattle. And then they say, well, we have a conflict between wildlife. That conflict has been already addressed. We took out the sheep off the mountains. I know people who have had to take the sheep off the mountains to make room for the bighorn sheep and they understood. They didn't put up the big fight. They weren't paid big checks for compensations for it. They knew that this was something that was going to happen. But if we know that something like this is going to happen to our community, there is going to be a fight. There is, it's going to be a fight worth fighting for. And I support these folks. I don't have any permits, but I support all their efforts because we need our community to be diversified. We need to maintain our culture. People love our culture. Now they want to take it away? No sense at all. Thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Royal.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Garrett Beniclausen. I live up in Taos Canyon and I work for New Mexico Wild. We'd like to think that our organization is a little bit different from other conservation organizations. We have a Aseca parciante on our staff. We have a grazing permity on our staff. And one of our board members is also an Aseca parciante here in Taos. And I just, I want people to look at this legislation like any piece of policy and realize that there are good and bad elements of this. Obviously, people are concerned and so I think people need time to voice their opinions. But I do want to, people to understand one thing, and this could apply to Taos and, and our precious wildlife, and that's our bighorn sheep herd. If you have the wrong, wrong interactions with domestic sheep and bighorn sheep, they can pass pathogens to the bighorns, especially pneumonia. And if the pathogen is virulent enough, it can kill not only the Rio Grande del Norte herd, but also the Sangre herd because they interact, right? And so we need to think of these things in a critical way. And, and there may be applications for this that would mitigate situations like this because if we lost that whole herd, that would be a tragedy as well, right? And the one community that isn't in this conversation enough is Pico de Sinteas Pueblo. And if we're going to talk about culture, obviously these species are both important for cultural reasons and hunting. I'm a hunter. But they also have huge, a huge draw, international draw for the ecotourism economy here in Taos. And so I think these are things that we need to think about, right? And I do think that this legislation can be sensibly amended to the satisfaction of the grazing community, which we very much value in Taos, that would, that would have parameters that would keep permits being purchased in an abusive way. And that, that those parameters are specific for wildlife and livestock conflicts that cannot be mitigated. Or an ecological situation that cannot be mitigated. And that is sensible, right? And, and the thing about Taos that I love is sometimes we disagree with each other and sometimes we fight and throw chingasos with each other, but at the end of the day, we come together and find common sense solutions. So I think that we should think about this in that sense and hopefully we can amend this legislation and get everyone satisfied. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Beniclausen. Is there anybody else? Yes.
Yeah, my name's Rick Hallison. I have a ranch up north, just south of Costilla. We've been up there since nineteen sixty. And I, um, I don't have grazing permits, but, but these guys back here behind me do. And, and a lot of them are closer than family to me. And, and so I feel for them. Also, I, I do business with them. I sell them cattle. I buy cattle from them. And, um, and so I, you know, I have a feel for them. I, yeah, I graze on my own property. I'm a private landowner, but I see how it goes. And, and you mentioned big picture. Here's the big picture. I'm sure you all, you commissioners know what the big picture is. I'm not sure if the audience knows what the big picture is, but it's called the thirty by thirty. And the previous commissions voted for the thirty by thirty in Taos County. And what it is, is they're trying to put thirty percent of all the land in conservation by twenty thirty. And, and this is how they're going to start doing it, by pulling permits. And by buying up property like Taos County did to the south of Taos here. And so I, that's what the big picture is. And they're going to keep nipping at it. And I've seen it. They did the same thing with this Rio Grande del Norte monument, you know? And, and now that's all gone and, and, and like a, a previous person said that it's just sagebrush now, you know? And those, those permits are pulled as well. And this is a lifestyle. I mean, it's, it's not a job. It's something people have been doing for a long time, something I've been doing for a while and, and I don't want to get away from it. And I'm sure these, where do we go from here when they kick us off, kick us off our land? And what it, what the thirty by thirty is, it's a controlling thing that I know Heinrich is trying to do and then Luhon's trying to do and the governor's trying to do. And it's up to us to start standing up and fighting for what we believe in. Thank you.
Thank you.
I try to set my timer.
You and me both.
My name is Micah Roseberry. I've been an educator, a farmer in Taos County for about thirty-five years. I currently own the farmhouse cafe and bakery. We serve a thousand meals a day, USDA lunch and breakfast. We serve to the Taos Pueblo Head Start, Tisa, Taos International and Vista Grande. And I've been involved in the farm to school program here. I would just like to say I've been working with sixth generation ranchers since two thousand fifteen, serving local beef and having that actually on the plate of the USDA school lunch program. I'm really glad this year the governor and the legislators got behind that. There's like fifty-seven million dollars that have been put towards local food, food security. Of ten million of that last spring, or yeah, last spring, we applied here in Taos County. I know you're familiar, we got the one point four. And primarily, most of that is being spent on a Matanza project. And I'd just like to go over that we could, it looks like do five hundred beef a year. That would be between three to five million dollars of economic development just from the mobile Matanza, not if there's any other facilities that we travel to. And I, I would like to know if we have the legislature, the governor, the county, the town behind us saying this is important, this is important for all the people here and it's important for our food security. Why are we being, I know there's like a Spanish phrase, cut off at the knees. I feel like we're not going to be able to take advantage of that. There's New Mexico grown money, up to three million dollars right now, that they're going to actually allow food banks and school districts to purchase this local beef. So this is like the prime opportunity that we've all been waiting for. And, you know, I just realized that a lot of the students I serve, those are eighth generation Taosanos, not just sixth generation. And I just, I really want you to, I guess, consider that because I think that we really have an opportunity. I, and I want to break it down. You know, we serve like local beef tacos and burritos and enchiladas and frito pies and even a hamburger. A sloppy joe is healthy for our children. And that's an economic opportunity for like all of our ranchers here. And it's also a super healthy opportunity for us. I would just like to say thank you for allowing us to speak today because I might sign up on the little meeting list, but I feel it's really valuable for all of us to hear each other and be here as a community because this isn't the only issue that we all face. So thank you for, I would like to ask you to still ask for a large public meeting for this issue and also for the expansion of the ski valley. So we're, we're all in this together for quite a long time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roseberry. Appreciate it.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for your time. I am Mercedes Roldigas. I am the Executive Director of Taos County Economic Development Corporation and TCDC is spearheading the meat processing facility being built here in Taos along with cooperation from Taos County and the town of Taos. We were awarded a one point four million dollar grant from the New Mexico Food Security and it comes directly from the governor's initiative of New Mexico Food, Farm and Hunger Initiative, which was announced in twenty twenty-two by Governor Luhon Grisham. This is to address hunger in New Mexico. I think that is spearheading everything. And so if our state is going through great measures to ensure first security in New Mexico, we here locally are making great strides to ensure that as well. TCDC, along with local partners, have brought Taos County and the town of Taos together in support of creation of a new meat processing facility that will be essential for food security. These grazing permits are essential for most of our ranchers here locally. And I really do feel that that is food security and that's how we are going to address food security. Meat, local meat is essential for our local food and hunger initiative. And I think that we should stand behind that. And I request that you support our local ranchers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roldigas. Thank you. Is there anybody else? And for those listening online, when we have gotten to everyone in the room, we will go back to the phones to see if there's anyone listening and, and work that technology. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Gavin Kirkendall. I'm from Tres Piedras. My family's ranched over there for many generations. And I kind of jumped ship a little bit and went off to vet school. I have the privilege of being the veterinarian for a lot of the ranchers sitting here behind me today, and that's a great privilege. The thing I'd like to say today is that if you want to see land stewardship in action, look at these people. If you want to see animal husbandry in action, here they are. If you want to see people who know how to value the land, how to take care of it, how to use it appropriately, here they are. I'd like to briefly address the idea because this bill is based on the interaction between the, the Heinrich is putting forth, the interaction between livestock and wildlife. And it was mentioned about the OPP, the Ovine Progressive Pneumonia, and the bighorn sheep The easiest way to control those diseases from a veterinary standpoint is in the domestic herds. We saw that with brucellosis in the greater Yellowstone area. It still exists in the wildlife, but the cattle are basically controlled. I'd also like to state that I feel like we're talking a lot about culture and that is important. This whole initiative, the whole idea about supporting the grazing on public lands is all about culture. It's all about sound forest and ranger management. And it's also about feeding the nation. I think it's important on a national level, a state level, a county level, that we think about what some of these folks have talked about, feeding the people. Folks, the big feed lots look like they're great because that's where the cattle are. But those cattle start here on the forests and the rangelands in New Mexico or Colorado or Texas. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Pacheco.
Thank you for what you guys are doing for us and listening to us. Name's Pat Pacheco. I'm a rancher here in Taos, Cofax County. I personally lease over a thousand acres in the county of private land that people want to keep in ag. There's two ways to keep it in ag. You bale hay or you graze cows. She'll know. There's opportunity to improve the quality in that land as long as you keep cattle on there. I personally finish cattle all the way to about twelve, thirteen hundred pounds. I process about a hundred. It all sells direct in the community. No antibiotics, no hormones, no corn, that. So people want natural beef and you guys have an opportunity to support us. You see how Gualsids is doing in Whole Foods, that's that whole process. I was hoping today that we could step a little bit away from our Heinrich and you guys as local leaders, help us be successful, be directly involved with us in making our community succeed. We don't need to see what happened in Mora or in Santa Fe in our community. You guys can step forward and say, we're going to participate in the federal government's management of public lands. And you guys have that power and you have that opportunity to take that to a vote from the water to the forestry to the grass. We have an economic impact on our community. You guys have the power to enhance that with us. Thank you for today.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to make a comment? Sure. Mr. Veal.
For the record, my name is Peter Vehill, Vehill. I am the district manager for the Taos Soil and Water Conservation District. While we can neither advocate for or advocate against the proposed legislation from the center, we do have some things that we'd like to state for the record that might help with a historical context as well as, uh, what makes it a northern New Mexico issue in our hearts. So, um, Taos Soil and Water Conservation District puts forth these comments because we are statutorily required to do so under the State of New Mexico statutes and because of the Soil and Water Conservation Law of nineteen thirty-six. The district would like to put on record that it acknowledges that the land-based cultures that exist today in northern New Mexico have always relied on the forests and associated water resources of public lands for sustenance and identity. The district reiterates, as stated in the historical context sections of these laws, that as far back as the early sixteen hundreds, the European settlers established and constructed many of the Asecas that are still used today. And with respect to the availability of water and the health of our watersheds, we feel that multiple use, use for all, as well as watershed health is paramount and that grazing will contribute to this if it is managed properly. The communities adjacent to public lands in our area have relied upon the many resources and multiple uses that public lands provide such as food, shelter and economic support. These resources and uses are of paramount importance to our federally recognized tribes and pueblos, land grant communities, Asecas, historic communities with historic cultural and social connections to the public lands. Traditional uses for substance practices and economic support such as livestock grazing, fuel wood gathering, Asecas hunting and forest products should be understood, should be appreciated, should be allowed and should be available and should be sustainable.
Thank you, Mr. Veal.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commission. Thank you for taking the time. My name's Juan Cusneros. I'm from Cuesta. I am seventh generation up there. We're coming in on three hundred years grazing in the same allotments that used to be common land. Some of it we owned, some of it we still own. And I'm one of those with the enormous amount of frustration today. I was at the first meeting, which I was told that the resolution would be up for action today. And it amazes me that a senator from Nevada has the power to stop. And it amazes me that a senator from Nevada has the power to stop Taos County from making their own decisions for their own people. And I want you guys to know that, you know, this man does not have the right. We've been there 300 years. Sastinoses will come off the mountains we run, and we come down in body bags. My kids will be the eighth generation, and I will make sure that they're there and their children are there. I don't have any ambition in doing these meetings and public outreach, because that's been done. And this man has no right to negotiate with me. He's not from here. He doesn't belong here. And I think everybody on this commission needs to ask themselves, who are you? Because if this bill has something to do with hiking, or biking, or floating down my river, the resolution would have passed, especially if I was a person that just moved here. And I know that we can feel good, and at some points we want to act like things are okay, and we're going to get our voices heard. This is the only time that I'll speak up. And I want to let you know that in Cuesta, we are united, and we have the ambition to bring Peñasco, Mora, because we are the people here, you know, from Santa Fe or Maryland or Utah, wherever this man lives. He could stay there, he can keep his policies there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sastinos. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to make a comment? Then I will go ahead and take the phone off of Do Not Disturb. And Vice Chair Romero, you can tell me how this worked in the hearing. If anyone is watching, listening in, and wants to call in to comment for three minutes, that number is 575-737-6310. And again, that's 575-737-6310. So now we get to wait. I hope everybody has some good lunch plans. You've been very patient. I don't think anyone's going to make a comment. Okay. We don't have anyone calling in. Thank you all for coming and sharing what you had to say. We appreciate you being here and waiting for our agenda to make its way through today. So thank you very much. And I think that I would entertain a motion for a 10-minute break for the commission, or let's call it a 15-minute break, for the commission to find some sustenance.
Motion for a 15-minute break?
Is there a second for a 15-minute break?
I'll second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Commissioner Viall?
Yes, I don't know if you--
Commissioner Mascareñas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Rush?
Yes. Thank you.
I know, I actually feel terrible about that because I want this. You can smell it from the front.
Something about Karen Shannon the other day?
Yeah.
She was like, well, you're gonna have a nice head beginning.
You're kidding me?
And I was like, okay, Karen, you should be honest.
Yeah. I needed it to. We turned down the, we turned down the air.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it made the difference back then. Do Bert over here in a minute, so I guess presents, I'm sure he'll turn it up.
Okay. Meanwhile, can, is there a motion to come back into regular session?
Make a motion to return to regular session.
Thank you, Commissioner Mascherinius, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Romero. Madam Chair, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Beheal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherinius?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chairbrush.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we are on Agenda Item 11B, which is Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution Number 2023-11, A Resolution Authorizing Taos County to Pick Up an Additional 1% of the Municipal Detention Officer Member Coverage Plan 1 Contributions with effective date of July 2023. Mr. Harmio.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. You've heard me on this resolution before. It stated that you'd have three resolutions coming before you. Too bad we didn't have this earlier on the agenda. The Executive Director of PRA was in attendance this morning. His daughter is one of the cheerleaders that we honored. So Mr. Trujillo was here this morning. Ms. Elam has been working with Mr. Trujillo and his staff on these three particular resolutions, B, C, and D. We have three Para plans. I'm gonna talk to, talk about them as a whole. So we have three different Para plans. So we have Municipal Detention Officer Coverage Plan 1. We have Municipal Police Member Coverage Plan 5 and Municipal General Member Coverage Plan 4. So these resolutions have been vetted by Christina Gunther, who works for Para. I think Mr. Trujillo also took a look at them. After the Commission votes on these resolutions, Ms. Elam needs to get them signed and turned over to Para by tomorrow so we can get onto their April Board Meeting. They're not gonna have a May Board Meeting, so it's for the quick turnaround time. We were trying to be proactive, having them on April. We wanna make this effective for July 1. So for B, C, and D, what you're voting for is that Taos County Government is gonna buy up to 1% of the employee's contribution for each of these Para plans. There is a caveat here, is that the state legislature did raise the rate of the Para contributions on both the employer and the employee portion. So the net effect is half percent that individuals will see into their pocket. So it's not gonna be a full 1% difference. It's gonna be half percent because of the, of the change in the, the change made by the legislature. But I do recommend approval on B, C, and D. And this is, will be part of our further recruitment efforts to try to get individuals hired.
Thank you, Brent, for the explanation, Commissioners, and, and explaining that that explanation applies to Items 11, B, C, and D, although we will still handle votes on them separately. But Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Harmio or Ms. Elam, who is also here with us?
No questions, but I'd like to clarify me.
Please, Commissioner Beheal.
You know, thank you so much. I know Gina, you have, as, as well as Brent, have worked really hard in trying to, to somehow, you know, there's a lot of efforts on trying to certainly help our employees in any way that we can. So I'm really appreciative that, that you all have done this. And so with that being said, unless there's anyone else wants to say something, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-11.
Okay, and I'll go ahead and second Resolution Number 2023-11, authorizing us to pick up an additional 1% of the Municipal Detention Officer Member Coverage Plan 1 Contribution. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Beheal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherinius?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chairbrush.
Yes. Thank you. And Commissioners, now I'd like to entertain a motion on Item 11C, which is Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution Number 2023-12, A Resolution Authorizing Taos County to Pick Up an Additional 1% of the Municipal Police Member Coverage Plan 5 Contributions with effective date of July 2023.
Madam Chair, so moved.
Thank you, Vice Chair, and is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote on Approval of Resolution Number 2023-12, authorizing us to pick up an additional 1% of Coverage Plan 5.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Beheal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherinius?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chairbrush.
Yes, thank you, everybody. And now on to Item 11D, Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution Number 2023-13, A Resolution Authorizing Taos County to Pick Up an Additional 1% of the Municipal General Member Coverage Plan 4 Contributions with effective date of July 2023.
Motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Romero, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mascherinius. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Beheal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherinius?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chairbrush.
Yes, okay, thank you. This takes us to Agenda Item 12, Contracts, Agreements, MOUs, and Bids. And our first item, Item A, is Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding the Acceptance and Approval of the New Mexico Forestry Division to Taos County for the Valle Escondido Non-Federal Lands Grant, Project Number 23-02-3703, with a project completion date of December 31, 2024, in the amount of $400,000. We have with us this afternoon, I almost said this morning, JR Logan, our Taos County Forest and Watershed Health Program Manager. Welcome, JR, and thanks for waiting us out.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for having me. I know you've got a long day and a packed agenda. This grant, it would be accomplishing forest restoration and fuelers reduction treatments on private lands in the Valle Escondido area. That area was selected because of the adjacency of treatments on national forest lands. So the work we do on the private side of the fence complements the work that we're doing on the national forest side of the fence. This would be the fourth non-federal lands grant that Taos County has managed in partnership with the Taos Soil and Water Conservation District, I might add. The district has been a valued partner, and their technical expertise on previous grants has been invaluable. So with that, I'd stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Commissioners, do you have any questions for JR on this item?
No questions, motion to approve?
Okay, and I will second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote regarding accepting and approving Project Number 23-02-3703.
Commissioner Romero? Commissioner Beheal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherinius?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chairbrush.
Yes, thank you. Item 12B is Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding the Acceptance and Approval of the New Mexico Forestry Division to Taos County for the DH Lawrence Ranch Thinning Project. This is Project Number 23-02-3696, with a completion date of February 29, 2024, in the amount of $200,000. Mr. Logan, the floor is yours again.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, at the risk of sounding like a broken record, this is funding from the state that would allow us to treat on what is technically private lands. This property is owned by the University of New Mexico. Similar to the Valle Escondido project, this section of land is surrounded on all three sides, four sides, by Carson National Forest lands where work has already happened or will happen. We know that to effectively reduce the risk of wildfire, we need large contiguous areas. We call that landscape scale. And this project is really the keystone within this area for protecting the Rio Hondo and the San Cristobal Watersheds. This funding is the first phase of work at the DH Lawrence Ranch. I expect the second phase of funding for the state to come through in the next few months. So keep an eye out for that. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Commissioners, do you have any questions for JR?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Romero.
Second.
Okay, and so Madam Clerk, could you please call for the vote regarding acceptance and approval of Project Number 23-02-3696, which is thinning on the DH Lawrence Ranch?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Beheal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherinius?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chairbrush.
Yes. Okay, and at the risk of me sounding like a broken record, Item 12C is next up. And this is Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding the Acceptance and Approval of the Memorandum of Agreement for Taos County to Taos Soil and Water Conservation District for a Wildlife, Wildfire, sorry, Risk Reduction. This $250,000 is a subaward to Taos Soil and Water Conservation District from the $1 Million Green Corridor Wildfire Risk Reduction Grant. This is Project Number 22-ZG1017-4, with a completion date of June 30, 2025, and again in the amount of $250,000. Mr. Logan.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, this one is slightly different. The Commission might remember that about a year ago, the legislature approved $1 million in the form of a grant to Taos County for wildfire risk reduction in an area known generally as the Green Corridor. Subsequently, we've defined that area to include the Rio Hondo, the Rio Pueblo, and the Rio Lusaro Watersheds. There is a group that's existed since 2015 called the Taos Valley Watershed Coalition. That group includes Taos County, the Soil and Water Conservation District, the Carson National Forest, Taos Pueblo, various isekias and land grants within that geography, and other stakeholders. After the approval of that $1 million grant to Taos County, that group met to essentially divvy out that funding as it was needed and according to the priorities that all of those partners had. Through those discussions, there was a consensus among the coalition members that at least $250,000 of that $1 million grant would be best spent, both efficiently and in terms of the quality of the work, by making that transfer of funding of $250,000 to the Soil and Water Conservation District, which would complement their existing forest health program, which they've been operating successful, successfully for well over a decade. And if we still have Peter Beheal, two decades. If we still have Peter Beheal and you have a moment to comment on the program as well as the use of these funds, we'd be grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Historically, when we started doing this kind of work, we did it back in 2000. We were the first district in the nation to take our mill levy money and put it on the ground, thinning forests, making people who lived in the forest safer. We have a lot of residents within the county that build in this interface. And that's where the program started. And it's been a long 20 years. We've done several projects with the county in the past, including the non-federal lands grants. You have a few of those that you're still doing. We still wanna do more, right? El Rito is our next area. We feel that that's in the high-risk category, and we'd like to do that. This is just working with you guys to spend the money. And spend it on time. and spend it on time and according to specification and standard. And we feel that we, our program will work complimentary with the county's view and interests, and we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Beal. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Madam Chair.
Vice Chair Romero, yeah.
Is this state money or? This is state money, right?
The origins are, it comes from the state, but this is actually federal money that came part of the not the, not AR, not American Rescue Plan monies, but the the funding before that, the CARES Act funding. This was funding that the Legislature appropriated last session. We got the agreements, grant agreements a few months ago. And this is the legislation that they took. The Legislature took the governor to court on, and so eventually the Legislature did appropriate some money in this word. It's actually federal money, CARES Act money.
Thank you, Brent. Any further questions?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Vice Chair Romero. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Mascherini. Yes, we have a motion and a second for acceptance and approval of the Memorandum of Agreement for Taos County to Taos Soil and Water Conservation District for wildfire risk reduction, Project Number 22-ZG101017-4. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Beal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherini?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's going to be a lot said about this meeting in Thursday's paper, but these three items that we approved with JR is the real story. Those para resolutions are positive stuff coming out. There's going to be a lot said, but I don't think this good stuff is going to come out.
Unfortunately, I think that the Taos news is off working on deadline right now, so they missed this good stuff. But thank you, JR. Your work to keep our land and water safe is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Item 12D, which is Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of TCC 2023-10, Facility Build for Juan I Gonzales Agricultural Center. The work will include installation of new walls to complete classrooms, installing of new lighting and HVAC unit. And, ah, Gilberto, you're here. Thank you for being here and speaking to this agenda item.
Good afternoon. So yeah, it's pretty basic. Most of you know, we did the the rest of the addition at the Egg Center a couple of years ago. It wasn't finished. So this is just finishing up the classrooms as well as installing all new LED lighting in the arena. And that's pretty much all it is.
Thank you. It'll be really nice to see those finishing touches put on there. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Commissioner Beal?
Yes, yes, really excited to see this. I'm just wondering if you have any idea as far as timeline. We won't hold you to an exact date, just a general idea.
No, it should be pretty quick. The biggest kind of obstacle on this is really going to be getting the lighting in. Once it's ordered and all that, that's going to be the biggest hurdle, really. So it may probably be done by end of June, for sure.
And as a follow-up, after this is complete, does that mean that it will be operational, ready to go? Or is there still more to be done?
No, that will be done.
That will be done. Okay, great, thank you.
Great, thank you. If there are no more questions, I'll entertain a motion on approval of TCC 2023-10 with facility. We have a motion. Is there a second? I will second that. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Beal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherini?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gilberto. Yes. Okay, this, yeah, that's exciting. Agenda Item 13, Department Matters. Item A is a presentation to the Taos County Board of Commissioners to request approval for staff to pursue a contract for services with GOV OS for short-term rental registration, compliance, and monitoring software. We have with us our senior planner, Mr. Andy Jones.
Good afternoon. I almost said morning, but we're well past that. So good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Thank you. I come before you today to respectfully present a request for approval for staff to pursue a contract with Granicus. They're the parent company of GOV OS and specifically a program called Compliance, which is the software program that we would like to use to be able to facilitate short-term rental zoning clearance permit registrations, compliance, and monitoring. Included in your packet that you received last week was a quote from Granicus that provided the amount Taos County will be charged on an annual basis. Got to lean into this one, all right. A meeting so long that the mics go dead. Do I have to? End push. Okay, okay, good. Technological issues. All right, so where was I? So, so, right, so the, in your packet was the quote and a list of, and an explanation of the services that they would provide to us with this software. We, after having conversations with several compliance monitoring companies, we wanted to work with Granicus and GOV OS for several reasons, but primarily due to the fact that this is the program that the town of Taos uses to monitor their short-term rental compliance and regulations. There have been some questions regarding the difference in price that the town of Taos pays for this service and what is being quoted to Taos County. And as GOV OS Representative Mike Bozick, who is hopefully still with us today, because I know he was going to provide a brief demonstration for you guys. So if, and if you're able to see if you can share screen with him in a minute. Okay, but as he can attest, the the difference really in the price is because the, you know, the county has a permit limit of 120. Right now, there's around 260 units in the town, so they still have some that need to come into compliance. But in the county, in the unincorporated areas of the county, we're looking at upwards of, you know, depending on the time of the year, 1,000 to 1,500. So I think that's a big issue, a big part of it. There's also a couple of the modules that the town of Taos isn't using that we feel would be beneficial. And so that's the main, I think those are the main reasons, and Mr. Bozick can answer more questions about that. So as you can see under the product descriptions on page seven of the Granicus order form, under tab one, this product will provide ongoing monitoring for up 60-plus short-term rental websites, a 24/7 web and phone hotline for community members to report issues with short-term rentals, compliance monitoring that tracks whether units are permitted or not, rental activity monitoring that will help us identify if short-term rental operators are reporting all their taxes, and a portal for permit registration, tax collection portal, and address identification. So we believe these features will save the planning department time and money as we process applications and monitor compliance. With current staffing levels, we would not be able to reach even a moderate level of compliance in the county without a, without a program of this type. So the online and mobile-based features will make it easier for short-term rental operators to submit their applications, and we'll let Mr. Bozick talk more about that. And while we acknowledge that this is not an insignificant annual cost for this program, I want to point out that the potential revenue that could be generated through the lodger's tax collection and permits. So under the draft version of the ordinance that we're working on and the proposed cap that I'm proposing, and of course, this is all subject to your review and approval and discussion, and also, we're getting really close on that, I want to say. Under that, we're estimating somewhere between 3/4 to $1 million just in permit fees. And then in terms of lodger's tax, based on the, based on what we were looking at with a 75% occupancy rate, which is what GOV OS shows us having in Taos County, and an average nightly rental of $220, we're looking at lodger's tax revenue between $2.5 to $3 million annually. So we understand this is a significant cost, but we think that with the lodger's tax revenue that we can put toward this, we can, we can take care of that on an annual basis. We also hope, you know, some of the permit fees and stuff can be put toward housing and staff levels if we do need more, I think specifically code compliance perhaps. But at any rate, we wanted to bring this to you for approval to move forward in procuring this program so that you'll be aware of the situation and the cost, and so that we may have time to implement the software in advance of rolling out the new ordinance, which I'm hoping to bring to you sometime in the next month. So I stand for questions, and then, as I was saying, we have Mr. Bozick on on the go-to meeting, and he's here to answer questions and hopefully present a short demonstration as well.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. This is, to me, exciting, yes, expensive too. But when we think and talk about the ways or the forces that are changing our community and how we're changing, this short-term rental issue could be one of those forces out there. So just to try to get a handle on the picture of what's happening, it seems very important. So I want to thank you and I thank Mr. Bozick for being here too. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Jones before we see a brief demonstration? Vice Chair Romero?
Madam Chair, yes, what is the, the amount of the proposed contract?
All right, there we go. Let me get it up here on my page. And so, let's see. That is.
What's that?
60. It's around 60, I think, after taxes. I think it maybe it comes out to around somewhere 58 to 60, but that's $1,000 annually. Hang on. I'm going to use both hands to flip through the pages here. Hello, there we go. All right, so it's a subtotal, including six modules of $58,492 and change, and then with taxes, it comes out to around $63,000 annually.
And so the, on the consent agenda on C, the bar asked to transfer $200,000. Is that because of the?
Commissioner, we didn't have enough, we're transferring money from the lodger's tax to cover the expense of purchasing this software. So lodger's tax statutes do allow for it.
So, so what was approved last, last meeting on the, on the tourism balloon? Is that, I guess that would, could be included in that transfer also, right? Is that correct?
Chris, do you know, can you speak to the transfer?
I didn't. Madam Chair, Commissioner Romero. So two separate transfers. So what we tend to do here in Taos County, I'm not sure why, is we, we break up our budgets in, in a lot of different buckets. And then we find out we want to use this bucket, and it's not, it's not full. So then we transfer money from another sub-bucket here. And so what we did last time to cover the balloon expenses to move within the budget so that we could find the right line item to make that purchase. And here, we're doing the same thing. We're transferring funds because it's not in the right line item that we want it to be.
But the amount of $200,000 would cover both this contract and last week's approval for?
In this area, I defer to this else of the hill. And I think the reason she's asking us to do that is to make sure that we have proper funding for both these purchases.
So sufficient amount to?
Correct.
To allow for both expenses yourself?
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. And Commissioners, any further questions or comments? Commissioner Beal?
Just a quick comment. I think it's important for us, Commissioners, to remember that this is also going to help in the area fair and equitable. Because right now, I think we, we don't have, well, obviously, we don't have everyone. So we're definitely, you know, can be challenged on that. So fair and equitable.
Thank you, Commissioner Beal. I have two quick questions about the product, but maybe Mr. Bozick would like to do his brief presentation first, either way.
Kenny, are you there, Mike? Yeah, I think, go ahead and give us your demonstration.
Mr. Bozick, I have two quick questions. I don't know if they're something you need to demonstrate to us, but I'll go ahead and ask. I know in the product descriptions, I'm not assuming that the list of companies that you say that, that you monitor is exhaustive by any means, but I do know that there is one that has a, you know, actually, physical presence in Taos and has run into some compliance issues with us before, and that is Vacasa or Vacasa, however you say that. So I'm just wanting to make sure that, that that's one of the platforms that you monitor. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. My only other question, because, you know, this is, it's really exciting. We need, we need this, this help, in my opinion, but can, and I know that a lot of the, the monitoring or communication about, you know, fees, taxes, et cetera, is something that will happen through the product. Can you also do, does the product also provide for other kinds of communications? Say, for example, in the peak of wildfire season, we want to notify property owners, the landlords, to say, hey, put your fire pits away. Do not leave them out there because we're in red flag season. Can we kind of have tailored communications like that through the platform? Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. Commissioners, you all walk around with the one remaining mic if you have other questions or comments. Or should we let Mr. Bozick just show us, you know, perhaps just a peek into the system, Mike, whichever, whatever you want to show us? And, and quick high-level peek is totally fine. Yes, we are. Thank you, I appreciate that. Commissioners, you all walk around with the one remaining mic if you have other questions or comments, or should we let Mr. Bozic just show us, you know, perhaps just a peek into the system, Mike, whichever, whatever you want to show us?
I promise you my items today will get you out of here a little bit sooner. I can imagine you guys had a day. So any questions to begin with?
Commissioner, any questions for Sheriff Miara on this item, item C?
Did you give a memo, Sheriff, explaining what you wanted to do? That you wanted to add that this position, go to the law enforcement academy and attain the certification?
Okay. So with that said, I can pretty much combine items C and D because the animal control positions are pretty much going to be falling under the same reclassification. The purpose of taking these two, these two separate positions into the certified realm is to not only increase the viability and the credibility of the sheriff's office, but there's also statistics for future administrations that show that the evidence tech position, if it's occupied by an individual that is certified, a certified officer, a certified deputy, that there is less likely to have the credibility of those evidence or that chain of custody challenged. Furthermore, it also increases our LEPF monies by those, by those positions individually. So I think that it would not only improve the professionalism, but the integrity of the sheriff's office by helping these positions move forward into that certified realm.
Thank you, Sheriff, for that explanation. Appreciate it. Any questions for, for Sheriff? Commissioner Romero?
This was supposed to be good morning, but it's good afternoon.
Yes, sir.
Steve, I respect you to the end of the world. I respect law enforcement. But just a few questions that I have. The evidence tech will be certified?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if that's going to be their duty still of evidence tech, they're not going to be out there patrolling and then they get a DWI call and they have something where they have to collect evidence?
No, no, no.
You know what I'm, it's going to tie up different things?
No, no, sir. It's going to be specific to that evidence tech. However, that would be within that individual's powers, but that's not going to be the focus of their job duties or their description.
Okay. And it's more, because evidence tech, it's a touchy, evidence is touchy.
Yes.
So say the, the officer, evidence tech is out on a call and they got to turn in evidence. Who would, who would they turn it over to?
So ultimately, once this individual comes back certified, it's my intent to have this individual out on crime scenes actually collecting the evidence. So that removes a component from the chain of custody being the, the individual officer or the individual deputy. So now the evidence, the evidence custodian will actually be out on scene tagging, collecting evidence. And so that, it goes directly from the evidence custodian into the evidence vault instead of having that third person or that other potential loophole in, in the case.
And more what I'm referring to you as, say, one of the deputies gets evidence, they have to bring it in, she's, she's out on the call because it's Sasha, right? She's the?
Yes.
So that they wouldn't have to give the evidence to the lieutenants and then create more of a chain of command. How, how would that work? Would it just, would they stay with it until she got in or how does?
As far, I guess I'm?
She's out on a call, in the scene. Another deputy has evidence that they have to turn in.
So we still, we already have a process in place. The evidence lockers are at the, at the office where the deputies will fill out an evidence control form, they submit their evidence, whether she's there or not, into these evidence lockers. Then she comes in, she moves them some from the lockers, checks it in, and then moves it from the lockers into the vault.
That's what I want. All right. No questions? Not on that one? On the animal control?
Okay.
As they leave wherever the animal control are and you have to post them, is it going to be harder to get animal control? What I mean?
Commissioner, I would hope not because along with transitioning them over to the certified, that also increases their pay.
Yeah.
And so we can use that to advertise and hopefully bring in that caliber of individual that is willing to commit to the animal control world as well as the deputy, sort of the certification.
That's the only questions I have. And the, and the third one, I'll talk to you.
Okay, let's, let's get there first. Thank you, Commissioner Romero, for the, for the questions. Yeah, I stole one from this side. You guys keep one, we'll keep, we'll keep these. Any other questions on items C or D, which as you explained are essentially similar? We will vote on them separately since they're listed separately, but any further questions for our sheriff? Okay, then is there a motion on item C about reclassifying the position of evidence tech position within the sheriff's office salary schedule and creating a new job description?
Motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion from Commissioner Romero. Was there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Romero. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Obstain.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. And now on item D, which we have just had discussion and consideration of, is there a motion regarding reclassifying the two animal control officer positions within animal control salary schedule and creating new job descriptions?
Motion.
Okay, there's a motion to approve from Commissioner Romero. Was there a second?
I will second that.
Commissioner Beal is seconded. Madam Clerk, please call a vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, okay, thank you. And then this takes us to item E, discussion, consideration, and decision regarding reclassifying two budgeted sergeant positions within sheriff's office salary schedule into two lieutenant positions. Sheriff Miara? Sheriff Miara?
So, rolling back and relying on the foundation that Commissioner Romero left us, we did have budgeted and implemented two lieutenant positions within the Sheriff's Office. During the tenure of Sheriff Hoagriff, those positions were cut out and pretty much the undersheriff and the sergeants were left for the supervisory and the administrative duties of the office. During the tenure of that, of the undersheriff at the time, which was myself, I saw a need to implement two lieutenants to help with the operations of the office, which would allow the undersheriff to be delegated to his duties as the undersheriff and allow myself to be able to actually act, be active as the sheriff as opposed to trying to fill lieutenant shoes. As far as the, the salaries and the, for these individuals, the cost will be coming from the already established sergeant positions that are already there, and I do have cost salary savings in FTE positions from this previous year that would cover, cover this transition. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Sheriff.
So you didn't have lieutenant positions prior to your term?
No, sir. Commissioner Romero, right after you left, the two lieutenant's positions were pretty much, they weren't phased out, but they were just somewhat abandoned, but they were not vacated nor were they taken off the books.
I have a question. Yeah, Commissioner Beal? If I'm understanding correctly, so you have the funding for it now and then in the next, because it's reoccurring?
Yes.
Is that a budget increase? Is that what it would require?
The lieutenants would see an increase reflective of the salary matrix for the Sheriff's Office. So there's the cost savings within the budget, the current salary schedule.
Right.
So in the current salary schedule, there do not exist the positions of lieutenant.
Okay.
So that's why we're asking for this modification.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Commissioner Romero?
And your lieutenants are who?
Lieutenant Marvin Armio and Lieutenant Rick Romero.
Are they here today?
Yes, sir.
I'm just kidding, Rick. Congratulations, guys.
Any further questions for Sheriff Miara?
No.
Okay, then Commissioner, what is your wishes regarding a decision reclassifying two budgeted sergeant positions into two lieutenant positions?
Motion.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Romero has made a motion to approve his, and Commissioner Beal has seconded that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you, Sheriff.
Commissioners, Madam Commissioner, thank you very much, and I hope you guys have a better day.
You don't have to turn red.
It's been a wonderful day. Thank you.
Long day. Thank you.
We're still here. Thank you for your hard work. Yeah, all of you guys. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we're getting there, team. Agenda item fourteen is our consent agenda. Is there, does anyone, would anyone like to pull any items A through H for questions or, or? Okay, then is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through H as presented?
Madam Chair, motion to approve.
Vice Chair Romero has approved. I'll go ahead and second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you, everyone, for sharing microphones. The technology is telling us we've been here too long. Brent, it's your turn. Item fifteen on the agenda, county managers' report.
I have fourteen different points, but, so Chris, Jason, why don't you kind of get behind me and we'll move quickly through this. The Villajataski Valley is asking us to contribute fifty-five hundred dollars from lodgers' tax to provide the Blue Bus summer shuttle service up to the ski valley. I don't know if they've mentioned this at the RTD meeting, Commissioner Mosquenias, but this is something we've done in the past. We want to use approximately fifty-five hundred. There's going to be an M.A.W.A. that's going to come before this body between us and the Villajataski Valley to fund that summer service. Yesterday, Chris did go to, Chris and Patrick Trahill are turning met with the Board of Finance. They discussed two projects, the gas line project and, or two, three things, and detox and the Taosness leases because we need to get on the Board of Finance's schedule, and that was partially the reason of planning to move this along. Chris, I don't know if you want to add to Board of Finance?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. So two items, first, the, the gas pipeline project. The challenge has been satisfying State Board of Finance that we don't have an anti-donations issue. They've asked us to be creative and come up with a proposal. We were telling them, give us some guidance. So yesterday was a bit of a breakthrough thanks to our, our counsel. They reached out to DOT because State Board of Finance is the one that makes the decision whether we're compliant, they can't be giving us recommendations of what to tell them. But, so they reached out to Department of Transportation, and Department of Transportation's going to walk us through, making sure that we fill out the, the paperwork correctly as far as our request is concerned. So the, the bond questionnaire, they're going to guide us through that process. So hopefully that, that, it's a challenging issue to, to resolve. Regarding the, the two leases here, the detox and the shelter, where we're at there is, our attorneys let us know that there is a statute that says if we work with a local nonprofit that has a reputation in the community for doing good work, we could lease to them and then, to the degree that we decide, allow them to pay in kind. But if we do that, then we, we just can't say, well, the form at, at State Board of Finance says that if we, if we do that, then we have to set it out for competitive RFP or competitive process. And so the question we have is, which, which takes, which is superior? What it says in the form, and we're not sure that's backed up by any, any legislation or, or administrative regulation, or what's in the statute? So they're going to answer that question for us. She's not an attorney. We're talking to the Director of State Board of Finance. She's going to refer that to their attorneys, but we're hopeful that, that it'll be resolved in our favor and then we won't be restricted to have to go to a competitive process. Hope that made sense.
It did. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right, thanks, Chris. With that said, we should be getting the appraisal for the detox building this week, and the request for proposal for detox for those medically indigent that don't qualify for Medicaid will go out on Thursday. They'll go live on Thursday. The Taos lead let everyone advance with dignity. Interview panel that Mr. Zach Cordova was part of, they'd selected Dennis Romero for the position of the Taos Lead Program Manager. Mr. Romero has many, many years of experience in law enforcement, has run his own business with the twenty-five thousand grant from the legislature for grant writing. We're also using an individual by the name of Tali to write a grant for us. He attended the EV charging station grant workshop that was online last week. Some of you may have got that, got that invite. So Tali attended before us. And he says, finished the contracts for the farmer's market and the flea, the flea market. We're also need to do a, so the farmer's market will be here on Saturday, the flea market, but we're not calling it a flea market. Courthouse Market will be here on Sunday mornings, the car club, with all these will be here Sunday evening is where we've all worked out. And he's has been handling that. If you have any questions regarding para, they will be here on April twenty-six at nine AM here in the commission chambers if you have any questions for that. You got the Earth Day Flyers. If you want to volunteer on Friday, please be at Filibon Sanchez Park at eight o'clock. The joint meeting with the Town of Taos will be here in the commission chambers at four o'clock. And there, is anybody attending the legislative update tomorrow in, in Las Vegas?
Unfortunately, no.
All right. So I may attend to that. I did sign up, but if somebody else was going, I wasn't going to go. And then it looks like we're going to have to cancel the retreat. Punya is not available on Friday. His wife, surgery, got pushed back. And Jason's going to present in a moment before I turn it over to Jason, John Dunbridge, and Alvis Calente. Is there any questions of me?
I have a question. Real quick, Brent, I know that the, the commission has had a lot of work studies with the Town of Taos. They met, they're working hand in hand. Is there going to be ever a time that we can set up with Tuskegee Valley, Questa Municipality, and Red River Municipality, see if we can get them in with us?
It's a great.
I, I think each one of those municipalities would welcome that. We have some shared issues at the ski valley. They're in their fire department building. We own the building. We need to transfer that over. There's items in Upper Red that the Town of Red River would like us to solve, and then, and then they also handle the solid waste for those in the upper valley. The Town of Red River handles that solid waste for us, and there's a little bit of some issues. And then it'd be good to sit down with Questa. I mean, there's the Chevron issues, but there's a lot of other things that we could partner up on, so it'd be worth it. And then another thing that we talked about last year as COVID was, was ending, and we talked about this prior to COVID, is to have a meeting up in Pinasco and just maybe a special meeting and just go over things that it may be affecting that area too. So besides those three municipalities, Commissioner Ramirez, three municipalities in his district, plus the Task Pueblo, that we should also go to Pinasco as well and do a meeting up there.
Yeah, that's a great question, great ideas, great ideas to have meetings. Maybe after we get through budget season, we can, we can get some of those things set up. Thank you.
All right, thank you. With that, Jason's going to come up and present.
I'll be real quick. Thank you, Commissioners. Good day. Most of you have seen this John Dunbridge update. The only thing I wanted to share with you is currently where the substantial completion is going to be completed, hope is it going to be April nineteenth, but it looks like I just read in an email it's going to be April twenty-sixth. So through this process of this, as you could see, this is, if not all, everyone who's here, this is what the bridge looked like, the total encapsulation of the sandblasting and trying to take off all the lead paint. And there's some pictures that are within the last week that will be, that I'll show you now that with the new color that's unveiled instead of that silver. I'm guessing it's silver, I'm colorblind, so. But that's, this is all kind of a snapshot of the bridges, as the bridge is how it's morphed over the Rio Hondo. And then here's the new picture, so that's what the new color of the bridge is. So we've, we've, we've come to this point, there's just a sign that needs to be attached to the top that's showing the overall height in case we get somebody that goes through there with an oversized vehicle. There has been times that somebody has hit that. So that's the only thing, that's one of the, going to be checklist, I, not, it, it isn't going to be an item of a checklist, it's more if they know it needs to be completed, they're just waiting on, on the sign to show up. As you can see, the, the picture to the right or left, that slope has to be seeded. So that's, that's we're waiting on the individual to come through, and that's going to be seeding that whole slope. The Rio Hondo, as you could see, that's not the old timber bridge that had vigas from nineteen-twenty where it's a whole concrete abutment with the, the guardrail is on there. It's a toll bridge that will outlast myself and my kids. So, you know, I mean, we're, we've done some great work in this area, and that's the, the, we're finished with that project right now. So like I say, we have a week to go. I'm planning on having a ribbon cutting ceremony, probably for the first week of May. So I'm working with the contractor. We have a meeting, we have weekly construction meetings every, every Wednesday. So I'll know more and I'll invite everybody, I'd have a notice of quorum, but everybody would be welcome to come down and see the new area. We'll work with our sister agency of BLM to open up and unveil that for our community residents. This is just one part. We still have that other piece of the switchbacks that we need to address, so, you know, and that, I have a congressional spending request submission in. Haven't heard much anymore, but, you know, I'm hoping that we can get some funding for the feasibility study and then start working on those switchbacks to make that a safe travel bath for our, for our residents. If, Anisa, if we can go to the, thank you for that, all, if we can go to the Alvis Calenta Bridge?
I'm trying to, can you start giving them?
Yes.
Not, not even.
It'd be on the same attachment, we can open up that attachment? Yes, I just, the sec, the John Dun, I just added another bridge to, under reply. So if you scroll up or scroll down, it would, it should surface. Okay. Shows that it was.
I'm sorry, I'm not seeing here.
If anything, I can share this with the commission. Where we're at on, on this bridge is we've hit all, all the renovations, but we've hit kind of a snag. We've hit that timeline for us to be out of this area for the Southwest Flycatcher. So we're at, it's, I'd say we're about seventy percent completed. So right now, we're in the middle of, of seeding any disturbed areas along the shore of the Royal Grand. There's some cattails that are being planted this week. The bridge is, has a new curb on there, new guard railing. Majority of the decking is completed, as you can see also now. And, thank you. So this is just the first part of the bridge. This is part of the, the current, we removed the asphalt from the decking of this bridge as we uncovered through each of these planks, dry rot. But as you can see, the far, the picture in the far right was an old outdated guardrail that had seen its life expectancy. The bottom curb, that's a wood timber curb, you could see it's already crumbling, it's falling apart. This is same bridge. That's what it looked like when we removed all the asphalt. And you could see there's some dry rot through there, but there's some good timber that's still on the bridge, and that's where the crossroads we're at right now. I'm trying to determine whether we want to just completely deck the whole thing, the bridge, or the work that has been completed to date, we may just leave it, but there's a transition of elevations in here. This is some of the specs of how it got notched to support and how it tied back into the girders that are underneath the, the bridge. And each of these have these runners that go across that bear some of the weight from the decking to each of these planks that go over there. This is installation of the, of the guardrail. Here's the micro piles. These are some steel reinforcement of an I-beam that kind of sandwiched each of these poles with the micro piles that were, have been in this bridge since, I've heard different stories, I've heard the twenties, I've heard thirties. Here's a couple of different areas. These were items of concern as these structural supports are, were provided to create the longevity of this bridge till we build the new one. This is what the finished product looks like. So majority of this wood was able to be reused, the dry rot was cleaned up. As you can see, the color change between the two discrepancies, that's actually new timber. Part of the issue that we ran into this was a supply chain issue of trying to get the actual lumber onsite in a, in this tight manner, it just, it didn't meet. But as you could see, both of these, that's the new guard railing, the new curb. But as you could see, both of these, that's the new guard railing, the new curb at the bottom, that how it attaches to this bridge. So by the looks of it, if you see right in the middle, if you look at the, the bridge, you can see there's a transition of about a three inch transition. That's where I'm saying that we still need to complete the decking as we head to the north of this bridge. One thing that I would like to point out, this, the planks on this part of the bridge have been replaced before. So they're essentially, even though there's some dry rot, there's some still good timber that's on there. We could leave it as is and just create this bridge and move past, and then just focus our energy and funds. Instead of placing it on this component, put it into design and move forward with the new bridge. So, but you know, at this point, I'm still waiting on some structural calculations from our engineer that designed this. If they feel that this is still feasible to keep it where it's at, we may call the bridge complete. And that's the extent of it, but we've come a long way. And I feel that this, there's still some good bones on that part of the bridge that we can maintain. And as you can see, the elevation changes, so that was replaced at one point. I stand for any questions at this time.
Thank you, Jason.
Tried speeding through that.
These bridges look amazing. Thank you for all of the work that's gone into getting us here. Any questions for Deputy Manager Silva?
No questions, but just also my gratitude. I know this has been something that you took on when you walked in the doors and, and I can remember the community meeting we had. Commissioner Brush and I were there and.
On a weekend, you showed up.
Right, so there's been a lot of efforts here. I sure hope the community appreciates it, and I know they're already looking towards a new bridge. And, and you know, I know there's much work to be had there, but just happy that we've, we got through, we're getting through this one. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gilberto's gonna come up real quick and give us an update on the work that's occurring this week at the Plaza. So it's actually going a little bit faster than we anticipated.
Hey, good news.
Good afternoon again. So we are kind of going a little bit faster. We are still planning on actually being done on Friday. It's around the original plan. The trench across the street has all been done. All the pipe is in. They're gonna start filling that in with flowable fill tomorrow morning at 10:00. So they're gonna let that sit cure about a day before we start covering that up. So like I said, we are kind of still on that Friday timeline. The one issue, talking to the subcontractor that we might have, is he's not 100% sure if he's gonna get asphalt by Friday. So if that happens, there's two choices. We'll either put steel over it temporarily or put a base course cap on it and, until we can get asphalt from somewhere. Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
So that's, that, like I said, that might be the only kind of setback we have. We'll still be open again on Friday, but we might have to come back at some point and pave that. But like I said, we're, we're looking good there. We should be, should be good to go.
Thank you, Gilberto. Appreciate that update. Any questions on the Plaza/Courthouse project? Thank you so much.
That, the steel structure there, that is the committal shaft. And that's probably another, two of the walls are up and they're on the third. So like I said, it looks quite a bit different today than it did last week. Which I don't, they are coming up next week. I don't know if they're planning to do another video. I can ask them and see. And that, same, we're still pretty much on schedule. Landscaping's gonna get finished. Same thing as the courthouse project is, one of the big things we have left on this is paving and stuff. So that, that's another question there, but everything else. But, but yeah, we're, like I said, we're, we're good on that too. We did get the money, not on hand, but for the admin building, so. We'll hopefully be 100% complete by this time next year, once we get that money on hand.
You know your meeting's too long when the technology can't stay true. Thank you, Gilberto. I really appreciate the updates. It's great stuff. Thank you for, for being here to talk to us. Appreciate it.
You guys are experiencing any computer problems, outlet problems, phone problems? Please let Colin know. Commissioner Miguel wasn't receiving our group text, so. So with that, I don't stand for any further questions.
Thank you, Brent. Commissioners, any questions on the manager's updates? Okay, I don't think we have any questions for you. Thank you, Brent. Appreciate all of the information you just shared with us. Let's move on to item 16, Commissioners Reports and Matters. Item A, new business to be considered at a future commission meeting. I think you said something important, which is that when we do get agenda requests so that you can kind of juggle and manage, please just point the people making the request to you so that we can. Okay, well, we'll try. We'll try. Any other new business to be?
It's in regards to moving the Ag Center along to make sure that the board is up and operating. I don't know what we need to do. It just wanna, it's not really new. We just know that we need to keep that moving along. And more so because during the state of the county, I did get a couple of individuals come up to me and some of the, they're just curious for one, when, when are we gonna get that going? But the other concerns that I'm hearing is that the building is not, they're not able to utilize it for anything other than ag. And, and yet they hear that other things are occurring. So I, I, you know, with all due respect to Anisa, because she works very hard in making sure that everything is, is fair and, and moving along. It's just that I think we need to make it very, you know, spring it back, let's get that board going. I don't know what we need to do on our end, but also make it very clear. Because I, I was looking at the resolution. It appears that ag is obviously the first and priority, but also the uses that the community once upon a time enjoyed or was able to request because there wasn't no other venue. You know, they, they wanna continue to do that, so I think we need to consider how we're gonna move along.
Real quick for the new commissioners. The, the commission needs to appoint members to the Ag Board Resolution, per the resolutions. We need to take a look at that and, and move that process along. That's what Commissioner Vail's referring to.
Thank you.
Follow up on that, Brent? So what happens, because there is some requests of, to use the Ag Center for other, other things. I don't, I don't recall us ever making that decision not to use it for anything other than ag. Am I wrong? Remind me, because if not, we should reconsider, because it is something that used to be used. I don't understand the downside or the con to it.
Well, there was, we were told that to only use it for ag. And then we went strictly ag. And, and then we were waiting for the new board to be in place to come up with the rules. That's, that's kind of the way I remember it. It's, it's the new board that would come up with it. So, but for sure, we clarified, and Randy remembers this. The arena building can only be used for ag.
Right, that's very.
Yeah, there's two, there's two different properties, two different tracks, I should say. And the arena tract can only be used for ag-related activities.
And I have it right here, and it says, and any other, any other approved by the commission. Just something to go back and look at. I'm, I'm one commissioner, but we certainly want to.
But just to be fair to everybody, since we started this, I've turned down a lot of people. So if we're gonna implement it now, we're gonna get a lot of backlash from a lot of people that have already turned down for graduation. I mean, I've been turning people down for graduation parties and funerals, mostly, and baby showers. So if you turn this around, I've already told everybody that I've talked to, once the board is implemented, then they can make the decision so that it's fair for everybody, because it's just gonna, right now, it's gonna, it's gonna cause a real backlash.
What's happening, and he says, for example, what I'm hearing is that for the Thanksgiving dinner was there.
Okay, so that's the other thing that they told me that I could do is community events that are like the, the bizarre, not individual parties.
And I'm not even referring to that.
Okay, well, that's why the Thanksgiving thing was a community event, free for anybody in the community. Birthday parties, graduations are just centralized to certain people. So by doing it as a community thing, that's the only thing I have been letting do.
And, and I think what I, what I, what I'm being asked is that, like, for example, the Special Olympics for the seniors, or, I mean, that's a public event. Why wouldn't we?
They haven't asked me.
They have not?
No.
Okay, okay. And. Actually, Ruthie should.
She just never asked me, so, no.
Okay. Nonetheless, we need to kick it up again, and it looks like this is the right time since we have our new, or, or not new, but the Ag Center's going to be complete fairly quick, so. Thank you, thank you.
Anything I've got to add there? That's some good new business. Commissioners, any other new business to be? Okay, then let's move on to item 16B, Commissioners' announcements. Any announcements? Okay, seeing none. Let's go on to item 16C, our board or committee reports. The first one is the Holy Cross Hospital Nominated Committee. Vice Chair Romero.
Yes, I'd like to report on the Holy Cross Hospital Nominated Committee at ASMED. It is in the process of selecting two new board members to Taos Health Systems, Holy Cross Hospital. And we have another meeting Thursday, so, so that continues. On the working group, Holy Cross Hospital Working Group, Commissioner Vail and myself attended a meeting a week ago or so. And so I'll just give you some of the detail on that. They reported on the Mill Levy I, which began in 2017. They received 5.6 billion total on that Mill Levy I. Mill Levy II was voted by the voters in 2019, and it continues to 2024. They have received 2.7 million at this point and, and have a balance of 911,559. And all this, this funding has been spent on capital asset needs. A little bit of discussion on the Senate Bill 205 that we just passed. And that puts the possible resolution for the commission. It puts that in our court for possible ballot for a half percent GRT and has potential to raise 2.8 million per year. And the hospital reports that they have a $23 million need for capital assets. And this, this, this could potentially continue for 10 years. And finally, discussion on transporting of patients. And for this one, a request was made that we have our new EMS director attend the next meeting, which is set for May 15th. And so with that, I'll turn it back over to Commissioner Vail if she has anything to add.
Thank you. Did you have anything to add for the working group?
I don't have anything to add. That was actually a really good summary. But I, I guess the one thing that I would add is, I think this working group is, it's been very, very helpful in creating those relationships. So I just wanna share that it does allow us to, you know, to really kind of dive a little bit deeper and, and start building those relationships.
Thank you. And since you have the mic, do you wanna continue with the TOS Housing Partnership? No, I didn't put the TOS Housing Partnership. Okay, I guess I could give an update, yeah, because, okay, sure, sure.
Right, updating, thank you. Okay, so what has occurred is that we did go through some interviews. We had some really strong, what do you call it, applicants in regards to the executive director position. We're still not complete, so I'm not going to share any other information other than we are moving that along. And so that's what has occurred lately, and I think that's pretty much what we've been dealing with. We did have someone come in and speak to the group in regards to a particular model that we might consider. Because one of the most complex parts of this whole thing is how do we move forward, you know, protecting the community, protecting town and counties' assets, or, or the funding, rather. And, you know, that we make sure it really is going as far as it can and, and hopefully, really what it's meant for is those here in the, the locals are able to, you know, hopefully participate. That's pretty much what we're, we've been talking about. And I guess I'm gonna turn it over to Chair, because she's also been part of that.
Yet the only other thing I would add, that's a good summary, that, you know, it's exciting that we're getting close to having an executive director for the organization. There's also been some work done around the structure and funding for a pre-development fund. There's been kind of a subgroup working on that. And then meanwhile, like the formation, like the paperwork part of forming the nonprofit is also moving forward. So I'll just add those. And I see this microphone is gonna die again in a moment. That concludes item 16, I believe. Commissioner Vail, did you?
Yes, I'd like to go ahead and just mention the state of the county.
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry, it's not in order, is that okay?
Yeah, there would have been Commissioners' announcements.
Yeah, go for it, go for it. Okay, just because it just occurred, and I think it's important to note, and my apologies, I am out of order here. So as you all know, on Saturday, actually, it wasn't, it was Sunday, April 17th, is that correct? At, if I got the right, right date, 2:00 PM at the Topo Community Center, the State of the County. I went ahead and did a presentation. I really wanna thank Commissioner Brush as well as Commissioner Romero for attending. And I just wanted to give a quick, just, just to let you all know, it was really appreciated that we were there. And it was just general information, very, very straightforward. But just so you all know, the conversation or the topics were the funding mechanisms in which we've been able to receive funding such as ARPA, the LACTF funding. We also, I also brought forth and, and shared how many, you know, positions we have in the county and how much were, positions are still vacant. And also, just quickly, would like to say that we spoke about the collaborative projects, like the Detox Days Inn, Nest, and mentioned Feli Mon Sanchez and, and TOS Housing Partnership. Also, Mr. Kaiser was there from Holy Cross Hospital and also mentioned that we had, you know, began an exciting collaboration regarding the hospital. And, and I guess, oh, Hester Courthouse, Alas Caliente, Veteran Cemetery, recycling. It was a lot of information. And we spoke about roads. That seems to be one of the biggest concerns. And, and I wanna really thank the team, because I know Brent as well as Jason and Joe Fernandez participated in gathering all this information. Gina Ellam also was very key. And I also wanna thank Commissioner Brush, because she also, you know, helped to kind of make sure that we were cohesive and, and she's very good at that. And the last, you know, we were thanked for Las Comunidades, and that was really put on by Las Comunidades and Taos, the Taos Neighborhood Association. That's in summary. I hope Commissioners, if I've left something important, please jump in.
I don't think you did. And it was, it was a good turnout. People were eager for the information.
I don't think you did. And it was, it was a good turnout. People were eager for the information, so it was really nice. Well done. Okay, Commissioners, we have the possibility of item 17 convening in closed session. We also have the option of potentially postponing that.
I was just going to tell you that. There's nothing pressing. It's just an update. So it's your call. I'm, I'm so ready for it that I love to do it, but I know it's been a really long day.
Okay, I'm like. You're fine doing it? You're fine doing it?
Yes.
Less fine doing it?
No, we have to bring it back.
How long about, do you think it will take? 20 minutes?
Not 20, but close to half hour.
Okay.
Because we can always go into more depth if you need it later on.
Okay. Okay, so I guess, is there a motion to move into executive session? Is there a motion? Oh, okay. I will move that we move into executive session regarding settlement offers on open pending and threatened litigation. These matters may be discussed in executive session under Open Meetings Act exemption 10-15-1H7, which allows for discussion of pending or threatened litigation. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Muscatini. Yes, Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, we'll be back in 20 to 30 minutes to conclude this meeting. For those of you who are still eagerly watching, thank you.
Mr. Randi Oto for our attorney's report coming out of executive session.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, members of the public, Board of County Commissioners went into executive session to discuss threatened and pending litigation. Those are the only matters that we discussed. No action was taken, and we complied with all requirements of the Open Meetings Act.
Thank you, Mr. Oto. Is there a motion to accept our attorney's report?
Motion to accept.
Thank you, sir. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please call the vote.
Ms. Romero?
Yes.
Ms. Mariano?
Yes.
Ms. Marzano?
Yes.
Ms. Romero?
Yes.
Yes. Last bit of business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please, one last time, call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. This meeting of the Taos County Board of County Commissioners on April 18, 2023 is adjourned at 4:46 PM.